Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Rizzi.
Here.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Supervisor Le.
Here.
Treasurer Corstange.
Here.
Trustee Nord Dyke.
Present.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
And Clerk Slater, present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is strength, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstange, to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no presentations, now is the time for public comment on anything that's on tonight's agenda that's not already scheduled for a public hearing. So, that would mean if you want to comment on the special use permit for the new business that's going in behind Thornapple Brewing. Other than that, save your comments on zoning, or the public hearings set aside specifically for that. And then, public comments on anything else that have that don't, not necessarily either of those, can be made at the end of the meeting. Would anyone want to comment on the building or the proposed special use that's being proposed for the rental space behind Thornapple Brewing Company? Okay. Article six, approval of consent agenda. Is there a motion or discussion?
So moved. Support.
It's a motion by trustee Nord Dyke, supported by trustee Rizzi, to approve tonight's consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions, is there a discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve financial actions.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by treasurer Corstange, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, article nine, first item of new business, 0602025, consider approval of special use permit at 625028 Street. Planning director Hendrick?
Thank you supervisor Lusbrance. Hopefully this should be pretty quick. So, the applicant before has went to the planning commission for a type two special use. A type two special use in the zoning ordinance has to be recommended by the planning commission for approval and then ultimately approved by the board. The applicant is requesting to use a section of, as Grace mentioned, 625028 Street. There's two buildings on that parcel. They are requesting that they use a southern portion of the east building for what planning staff has found to be consistent with an auto service operation, which is an allowed use in the B2. This parcel is zoned PUD. However, it does not have any agreements, and the underlying zoning is B2. This would be an allowed use. Planning commission found that this was an appropriate use with some additional conditions based on feedback from neighbors. So today, the board would just, I'm asking that the board approve the special use to allow for a high-end automotive protection and detailing facility within the existing commercial strip mall at 6250. The applicant is here if the board has any questions, and I would also be willing to answer any questions the board may have.
Have you received any negative feedbacks from the neighbors other than the requested conditions?
No.
Thank you.
That's a good question. Are they going to make any physical alterations to the outside of the building?
No.
Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to say anything? Okay. Seems to be going well for you right now, so.
Wise.
Further discussion or a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the special use permit for 625028 Street Southeast with the conditions that were approved and agreed upon by the applicant and the neighbors.
Support. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstange, to approve the special use permit at 625028 Street as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item of new business, 0612025, public hearing for the zoning ordinance. Before we jump into the public comments, I just want to give a little bit of background for the context, how we got here and why we're here tonight. Go back to several years ago when we started at the strategic plan and just had overall feedback for what residents who live here want as far as priorities. Overwhelmingly, one of the, I can think the biggest theme that we heard, that I heard, was to preserve Cascade's unique character that we still have left, and also to enhance residents' quality of life, existing residents' quality of life. A big part of that has to do with land use. A big part of the township's role is land use. And Cascade Township, like many other places in west Michigan, is under intense growth pressures. Not just residential, but industrial. There's intense growth pressures that aren't going to stop anytime soon. So with that, we looked at our master plan, which is basically an intent document that we're legally required to have, that covers big picture. What are the goals? What can developers expect? What are we looking for as far as land use and development goals? We had to fix our master plan because the old master plan was the opposite of what I think residents wanted. The three big changes that came out of the, that came out of the new master plan that we fixed and we had to move fast was, one, making sure that development was like, smart growth and development that's going to come doesn't, doesn't, doesn't negatively affect their neighbors' quality of life. What do you call it? Erosion, soil control, all the different things that we're not cutting corners with new developments that will then hurt existing residents' properties. Another big thing was the industry, the airport. We don't want to become Romulus, Michigan. When you think about areas that people want to live in, and areas that neighborhoods are placed, or excuse me, that airlines, airports reside in, they're not usually the highly desirable residential areas. We, so, we took steps, reversed our master plan to make sure that that eastern side of the airport, on the south end and all along the airport, basically the part that's not Kentwood, to retain that wooded undeveloped buffer. Industrial developers hate it, but I think it's absolutely critical to keep Cascade the residential property values and the, and the character. So, we changed our master plan. Otherwise, you'd have the industrial that was ready to go, it was ready to explode. And then that would bring the additional on-off ramps that were planned and that were already anticipated, that would then give direct access to the airport, but that would have all sorts of consequences for the Thornapple River and the people. That was a big change. And then lastly, though, what came out of our strategic plan from resident feedback was the village, kind of improving or creating a village area. But then we have to define what that is. And there's lots of thoughts and comments on that. So with that background, now we're at the zoning, our zoning ordinance. And that's the, the legal teeth that's actually enforceable. And that also needed to be updated if we wanted to follow the goals set out in our master plan as far as land use and zoning. The subcommittee was created last year. We had over 20 meetings with two hours apiece. It consisted of myself, treasurer Corstange, who's currently on the planning commission, trustee Rizzi, who was a former planning commissioner for many years, and then also our current chair of the planning commission, Alan Rowland. So we worked with staff to go over the old zoning ordinance and to update and make proposed changes. It then went to the planning commission. Then we had a public hearing then. The board since that time has taken the planning commission's recommended version and held a couple work sessions, all of them were public. Some of us embarrassed ourselves by talking pretty freely, but the public has had lots of opportunities to hear us talk openly, honestly, and sometimes unprofessionally about lots of the details of this proposed zoning. So because there's not a current consensus, and there's a desire by the board to listen to all residents and make sure we are heard, even though we already know a lot of people won't agree with it, especially developers and realtors, but we want to hear from the public and give them another opportunity to talk. Instead of soliciting certain, certain groups of people, we sent out the notice again to anybody who's affected or near within 300 feet of any changes to the proposed zoning. That's to be fair to everybody and also includes people that, like Old 28th Street has been a topic of discussion or questions. So with that extensive background, we'd like to open it up. Andrea, why don't you guys give us a, kind of walk us through where we're at today based on the most recent discussions at the board meeting, how the, I think there's been some changes since the initial draft that was discussed at the first public hearing?
Sure. So the, the draft that's in front of the board today is dated August, oh, I'm sorry, October 1. That's available to the public. And we held a, the last public hearing that we held was on September 9. I'm sorry, work session. So to be clear, the board has held one work session as a whole on this before the public hearing on August 5. This then went to the planning commission where we had our first public hearing on August 18, at which time the recommended version was provided to the board at a work session on August 25. The board made some changes then, and then came back to another work session on September 9, where I will quickly summarize the changes that happened to that version. On September 9, private streets were discussed again, and no changes since the last version, which was, was August 26, have been made. Accessory buildings were discussed. The board consensus items included increasing the height of residential accessory buildings that can be within five feet of the property line to 12 feet. So, for example, that's small little 200 square foot and under sheds that you'd buy from Home Depot. We recognize that not a lot of them are only 10 feet, so we wanted to allow that and move that from 10 feet to 12. We increased the maximum allowed height of non-residential accessory buildings to 28 feet, which is consistent with residential. It was an oversight that didn't get changed. Now, non-residential, as well as residential buildings, are allowed to be up to 28 feet. We increased the height of non-residential accessory buildings that can now be 12 feet as well. To be clear, that wasn't explicitly discussed at the meeting, but based on the feedback for residential staff, made that change to be consistent. We also talked about strengthening the ownership and path of, ownership and pathway incentives language in the mixed-use overlays. Mixed-use overlays allow for residential in some situations, and the board has some priorities that have been clear throughout the master plan that would allow builders to increase the number of units per acre. They're allowed on, in some of these overlays based on providing bonuses, or providing incentives that are important to the township. In that discussion, the board increased the density bonus from, for ownership, to two units per acre for 50, 50% ownership, and five units per acre for 80% ownership of those units. They added language requiring recorded deed restrictions to solidify that ownership, and they added a section to enhance the pathway bonus structure. That's now in the newest version dated 10-1. Hasn't been discussed, the board hasn't discussed that yet, but the version is there and the board has had that. We're hoping that that satisfies board's desires. The last item that was discussed was dimensional and density standards in the Form Based Code district. By consensus, the board decided to remove residential from Form Based Code district. All sections referencing residential have been removed from this version.
With that, is there a motion to enter public hearing?
Shipley makes a motion to enter public hearing. Let's hear what the residents have to say and what their concerns are.
Support. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstange, to open public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment or ask questions about the zoning ordinance, please state your name and address for record keeping. And then for the fairness of everybody here and also just in the community, limit your comments to three minutes. We're not going to have a back and forth right now during the questions, but we will try, and most likely we will hit on answering questions and concerns, or at least addressing them during the board deliberations following all the public comments. Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening and thank you for your time. I'll begin by introducing myself. I'm Joe Erdman. I've been, had a business in Cascade for 38 years. I own Cascade Point at 6886 Cascade Road and the Lima Candle Building at 2899 Thornapple River Drive. With me tonight are Mike Mike Sell, owner of Foundation Real Estate, previous manager at Signor Associates, attorney Steve Watt, and architect and developer Ken Dixon. My properties are currently mixed-use commercial properties with the Lima property at 2899 Thornapple River Drive, previously zoned for eight residential units above a commercial space. I'm here today because I have been informed that the township is considering a change that would remove the residential units, which would be a dramatic shift. I want to be clear upfront that these changes have real-world implications resulting in the taking of value through rezoning. An independent architectural review estimates that taking of these, of this rezoning would result in over $2 million in lost value and project feasibility. That's not just a paper loss, it's a real-world impact on what can be built and whether that site can succeed economically. This change doesn't just hurt me, it reduces housing options for baby boomers that want to transition from single-family homes to condos for retirement. This spot zoning reduces housing at a time when housing is a major concern. This spot zoning undercuts the success of commercial space at a time when there's a glut of commercial space. The development of a village atmosphere with residential and commercial development supports walkability, activity, and tax revenue, the kinds of things we hopefully are all trying to achieve in the original village development plan. I am committed to working with the township and being part of a positive, sustainable development. I'm open to design input, impact mitigation, or any other concerns you may have. I respectfully ask that you do not reduce residential zoning on this property, not as a favor, but as a matter of fairness, logic, and economic sense. Thank you all for your time and service. I'm happy to share any documentation to confirm all these things I have been saying and continue this conversation in any way that's helpful.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ken Dixon. I'm with Dixon Architecture. He, Dr. Erdman, introduced me as architect and developer. Developer, not so much. I do have a building in Ada that I own, but I wouldn't consider myself a developer. So, Joe asked me to come up here and talk a little bit about the experience, my opinion of, of the situation of the no residential for his property. Now, I haven't been involved with all the work that you've done. Trust me, I know all the work that goes into all the decisions that you've made. I've watched Ada do that same thing, all the stakeholder meetings. So, I mean no disrespect at all with anything I say here. You guys are doing fantastic work. I just wanted to offer some opinion, a third-world micro view of just looking at this property and my takeaway from the experiences I've gone through with Ada and attending the urban architecture and urban planning at University of Michigan. Just, the largest thing that I see when, when, when I hear that residential is taken away from a village setting is that walkability. That was the mantra of Ada, was the walkability. How do you provide walkability when you have to, everyone has to drive to the community? The essence of that walkability is neighborhoods, is neighbors, is people walking down to the coffee shop, walking to the ice cream store, walking to the grocery store, and, and that camaraderie that you're passing other residents in the village at that same time. So, that is probably the largest thing that I, that I would be just offering, take a second look at that, you know, if, if I'm somebody that can, can, can offer opinions, that walkability is important. Also, that, that core, the village core already has utilities and services and infrastructure, roadways, water, sewer, electricity. If housing doesn't strategically and delicately be placed in the village in a meaningful manner, it'll likely happen at the fringe. And now we have urban sprawl. We have extending those utilities, extending that asphalt, extending, that's a, that's a draw on, on the community. And I'm approaching my three minutes, so I'll wrap this up. The third was just the tax increase for the, for the township. You know, up to eight, eight condos here. The tax revenue from eight condos versus retail and maybe office that might not be as successful as what the residential sitting across from that beautiful Leslie Castle Park would be. The residential is, is consistent. It'll be there forever. The retail, the office, that may see some vacancies down the road. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Leslie Wisner. I'm a property owner at 2951 Thorn Hills. I've been following the rezoning of the properties in Cascade Township area. Our building is currently used as office rentals, which is not very popular today, as you're aware. We're interested in converting our property to a mixed-use or medium-density residential development, which is perfect for our location according to the original master plan. We're located in the village fringe and are surrounded by residential developments, which supports our desired use for the property. It's my understanding that any type of residential of use has been removed entirely from the fringe area where our property exists. This completely changed the village and negatively impacts my property and takes away my right to develop our site in a positive manner. I ask the board to reconsider their decision as it removes my right to develop my property as identified in your master plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Botrell. I'm Leslie's brother. My address is 6862 Maple Crest Drive Southeast. And I just wanted to add, in, in support of what Les said, that I totally agree with your view of the forest, seeing the forest, seeing Cascade the way that you want to. I just disagree with the placement of some of the trees or the, or the spot zoning, if I could use that. I, I, I just don't, I just think it defies logic to, when we're talking about wanting to promote residential, to actually exclude. And where this little piece of property is that Les is talking about, right there next to the fire station, right across from Sentinel, right next to Forest Hills condos, I just, I just see that that would be a perfect spot for quality apartments where people can live in what you said initially about the quality of life you're looking for. They can certainly walk. You talk about the walkability. So, I just think that what, what you're trying to do is absolutely correct, and I think this would be a missed opportunity to have it go forward the way it is presently. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Valentino, 1596 McKnighter Drive Southeast. Coming up, a little bit of a different angle, just as purely as a resident. I've got three teenage children that love to take their scooters down to Ada, and I actually just asked them what they'd like to see in Cascade. And, well, first off was Dunkin' Donuts. My daughter would be mad if I didn't say that, so.
Try that.
I know, that's what I told her to. But a vibrant downtown, the walkability, the retail, and the mixed use really does drive home this village and the concept that I think we were trying to start with. And, I mean, I hear the business side of things, but I was just coming up as a citizen with teenage children that just want to feel like we have a village, feel like there's a destination, feel that walkability. That mixed use, I really feel is critical to getting that feeling. So, that was the first half. Second half, it's more on the zoning and ordinance. It feels to me that this complete overhaul is risky. We're losing years and decades of previous versions of zoning that caught loopholes and, I guess, typos. Anyway, just at the bare bones, it was just, it seems like we should have started with what we had, made revisions where we thought we needed to focus. And I'm just feeling risky and uncomfortable with a complete overhaul versus changes and looking at specific areas that we wanted to improve. So I just felt like I had to bring that up as well.
Kent County has.
Wait, name and address.
I'm Doug Lee, and I'm a resident of Cascade, as well as an owner in the B1 district of, of a piece of junk of land and the Jam Bean Coffee Company. Kent County has the highest vacancy of businesses in the state. Okay, we have a tremendous amount of office space. So if you don't know office space, it's hard to get tenants. Where we're at short is residential. Housing is, housing is what's needed. And in order for those two to survive, you have to mix the two together. So we have to have mixed space use to pay for all these expenses. So if you can't rent out space, you may be able to rent out rental space. Okay. It was always my intention to develop the land in Cascade. My hopes that we cul-de-sac Old 28th Street to give me a secondary exit, which I do have approval to get a secondary exit on Old 28th Street through my property. It was my vision to have mixed space. We have to have a world that has both because people have to pay for all this stuff. And you've limited my entryway so bad that my property as a business is almost impossible. So the only way to maintain revenue stream is mixed space. I'm wanting to, you to reconsider that because that was in the original plan. And that was always my intention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Glenn Turek. 7199 Mooring Heights Court is where we live. My wife and I have lived in the township since 1992. We moved into our five-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath home on Mooring Heights Court, located off Thornapple River Drive. We raised four kids there. We love it here. Cascade is our home. We love the schools, the walking paths, the restaurants, the small businesses, the sense of community. The problem is, we want to stay here for the rest of our lives, but there's a challenge in the township right now. One that centers around the types of housing that's here. We essentially only have one generation of housing, houses built for the families in their 30s, 40s, and 50s, raising kids. Once those kids grow up, there's nowhere where they can live in this township. I have a granddaughter that she has no place that she can afford to live here. My wife and I are 73. We're looking at our options now because this big house that we have, we're like BBs in a Cornflakes box. We want to get into something that's more manageable, but there's so few options here. We don't want to live in an institutional senior living facility like Sentinel Point. We want a place that's designed for healthy adults, active adults, where they're social and it's safe and it's connected. There's nothing like that here in Cascade. The reason I'm here is to talk to you about a piece of property that my wife and I have owned since 1995. It actually is perfectly suited for a very, very special kind of residential development. It's a seven-acre site within Centennial Park. In 2010, the township's planning consultants identified this seven-acre parcel as a place appropriate for higher efficiency residential use. Not high rises, but a thoroughly Not high rises, but a thoroughly designed community that allows for amenities like underground parking, shared recreation space and green space. However, recently proposed changes to the zoning ordinance endangers what can be done and built on our seven acres. With lower limits of density being proposed at six units per acre now, it becomes impossible to provide the kinds of features that make a community enjoyable, such as underground parking, such as recreation amenities, quality green space, and then keeping this thing financially feasible to build and maintain. The result of this reduced density is that we lose the opportunity to create the kind of housing our township desperately needs. That's housing for young professionals starting out, housing for empty nesters and housing for retirees who want to age in place in Cascade. This isn't about trying to pack people in or to maximize profits. It's about giving Cascade residents a full life cycle of housing options. So people can stay in Cascade through every stage of life. Board members, we need your support. We need you to protect the diamond in the rough property. So it has the density to feasibly create a wonderful, thoughtfully designed community that provides a missing housing piece for Cascade. Thank you. Sorry for going over.
Is there anyone virtually? No.
Hello again. Julie Rockwell at 1868 Sterling Oaks Boulevard. I have two points I'd like to bring up. First, I'd like it noted on the record this evening that the September 9 board work session video that was pertaining to these proposed zoning changes was not posted online until this past Friday. Only a few business days before this meeting and before putting on the agenda and starting important timelines. Three weeks after that meeting occurred, which is far off the normal pattern. And I don't know what the reasons for that be, but it's fairly unusual. And it may be possibly my best theory would be the last half an hour or 20 minutes of that meeting, which Supervisor Grace referred to potentially as when people may have embarrassed themselves and may not have been quick to put it on the record. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the concept that most people are aware of, of eminent domain. The township has acquired properties to work towards certain zoning uses and goals. And that's the appropriate way that those goals are attained by paying market value for such properties. Many of the zoning changes in an attempt to do green space and accomplish other goals seem to be trying to zone away property owners' rights. And in essence, that is robbing people of their highest and best use of their property. Just as other pieces in this, such as private roads and limiting property owners in the village to be able to use their properties as they've been able to do so. So I'm going to encourage the members of this board to look at what the effect is both financially and emotionally to people who have rights to be able to use their property in a way and that there may be significant market value changes to these residents. And if the township wants to acquire these properties and use them in different ways, then there should be efforts made to do budgeting in order to do so. Or there should be campaigns for donors in order to do so. But zoning away people's rights is truly robbing the Cascade Township residents and businesses. And I think there's some awareness to that, but it seems to be inconsistently applied into certain areas. So green space is important and we all want green space, but you can't take away someone's rights to develop their property. And some of the private road pieces that are being done don't take into effect the amount of acreage or anything else or an attempt to do so. And they may not be intentional, but I think there needs to be more thought into that. So thank you.
Thank you.
John Meyer, 3444 Goodwood. I'm on the river. I don't know, I haven't been paying a whole lot of attention to what's been going on here. But I just would ask you that you look at what's happened in Ada with the development of their downtown and the residential and the commercial and the mix and the livability and the walkability of that town, that village and what's happened in the last five years. And look what's happening in Cascade right now to squash any kind of development that would bring up the desirability of Cascade and eliminate residential use, I think is completely wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. It's Scott Van Salk with 2570 Orange. I'm actually in favor of what you guys want to do to sort of streamline a lot of this and actually so we don't have more than 99 planned unit developments as opposed to little nitpicking, hodgepodge's little things like that. Just as for instance, in regards to the gentleman talking about senior living, Ada is going to put something in on a 13 acre site. They're going to spend $215 million on it for, let's say here, 100, I think a little over 100 different units, anywhere starting from $750,000 to $1 million per unit, which will have the pickleball courts and the activities and the restaurants or the fun things to do for seniors. But again, it's starting at three quarters of a million to $1 million per unit. Then it's $5,000 a month to live there once you buy the unit. So obviously, you know, that's spurred on by private investment. You guys can't zone, I mean, you can zone for that, but you can't make people come. Obviously, the more, I guess, builder friendly the zoning is. But again, we want to, you know, you guys are trying to keep the township how it is. Now Ada also has a different situation with an actual real village feel where they only have, you know, two lane roads going through their village. We have a five lane former highway going through our village, plus the river and also another five lane road of 28th Street. So it's not really a walkable area. I do live in the village area. I walk it, walk my dog all the time. It's fun. But in regards to what was also that initial plan to possibly dead end 28, Old 28th Street and then rezone that to make that more of a village area, that's great. But you know, there's only so much that can be done unless we actually start getting other businesses that want to come in to do it, obviously. And I also like how you want to try to get rid of a private drive. So I live on a private drive. We have to then redo our road. And to not try to, I guess, just have not necessarily a poor design mint of places, but also going back to Ada. I think they've done several things wrong. At the end of Face Street, if anyone has been there with their extremely high density, they have 16 homes shoehorned on four acres. If anyone's looked, if basically if you lay down from one end or one side of the house and another person's laying down on their side of the house, you can touch and meet in the middle. I don't personally think that's very nice. I mean, if you sit out on your deck, you're hearing your neighbors talk and no private conversations whatsoever. I would personally rather have a little larger area so we don't have that high density. So I'm good with low density. Thank you.
Any additional public comments?
I have one digitally submitted application.
Hold on, let's see if we've got one in person and then we'll go to that.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Lepke. I live at 4900 Streamside Point. I've lived in Cascade Township most of my life, raised my family here and I've watched this community grow. But lately I've started to worry that we're not planning for its future. My daughter was born and raised right here. She just graduated college, landed her first job and wants to stay close to her parents and grandparents. But there's nowhere for her to live. There aren't attainable options for young professionals who want to plant the roots here. At the same time, I'm 52 and my wife and I are entering that empty nest stage. We love Cascade, but there's still nowhere for us to go. No smaller, carefree, low maintenance homes with community amenities that still keep us close to friends, family and my parents. They are not ready for assisted living, but they like to downsize. There's no place for them either. That's three generations, all with deep ties to Cascade. I've been here since 1987 and not a single one fits into the current housing model. We built a township that only accommodates one kind of living, large, single family homes on big lots. And when we insist on more restrictions or fewer units per acre, what we're really saying is that people like my daughter or my parents don't have a place there. Higher density doesn't mean high rise apartments are losing our character. It means creating spaces where our kids can start out, where we can transition as our needs change. And when we age in place, we're still part of a community that raised all of us. Density done right brings life. It supports local businesses, walkability, parks, amenities, all the things that make a township vibrant and sustainable. If we shut that out, we're not preserving Cascade at all. We're freezing it. And when a community stops evolving, it starts to fade. Look at some of the vacancy in the area. I don't want to see that happen here. Lived here since 1987. I want my daughter, my daughter wants to live here, myself, my parents to all have a home, a place in Cascade. Maybe not under the same, you know, type of structure, but still part of the same story. That's what a real community looks like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Doug from GRAR, the Greater Regional Alliance of Realtors. And I'm here to formally introduce myself because the GRAR branding and the Realtor branding has come up at previous board work sessions. And we have not formally advocated on this proposal. We have asked questions of the planning staff. Thank you, Andrea, for getting back to us. We have hundreds of members that reside in Cascade Township and many other businesses as well. And we want to be a resource for our members. We're doing our jobs trying to help them find the information to help them and their clients. Many of them have helped many of their private property owning Cascade Township clients as well. So we're trying to be a resource for them and sometimes they aren't always hearing back from the township. So I want to offer GRAR's help to be a resource to you. That's why I'm here tonight, just to offer that, you know, if you would like help walking through the ramifications of some of these very tough, costly, burdensome zoning restrictions that would be placed on residential and commercial private property owners, let us help you walk through some of those things. You know, one of my favorite restaurants is here in Cascade Township. And I can only imagine what the ramifications might be for them, given what understanding I have of the code. I'm fairly new to trying to help people answer questions and look into this. But you know, what it would mean to someone's business, what it would mean to their property values. I heard the word takings earlier from one commercial owner. And I can only imagine, you know, that homeowner that is struggling with housing options and has a family housing need. And what if they can't have an ADU?
They can't.
And you know, it just, it just, some of these, the ramifications of these, the costs of some of these zoning provisions, it's interesting to consider. And so let us be a resource to you as you continue to work on this proposal. I thank you for your time.
Andrea, there's a written comment you said?
Yes, this is from Rishi who owns, Rishi Makar who owns a car, who owns International Beverage. Address 6859 Cascade Road. As a small family business, we are truly thrilled and thankful for the opportunity to expand our footprint and continue investing in the village area and the Cascade community. From the very beginning, the support and kindness we've received from our neighbors and our customers have made us feel nothing but welcome and we're deeply grateful for that. We're thankful to be able to expand our footprint, maximize our square footage and better serve the Cascade community. Our goal has always been to contribute positively to the growth and vibrance of Cascade. And we're excited to be a part of continued monument, our momentum in the downtown area. Thank you for your time and consideration and for all that you do to help local businesses do.
Last call for public comments? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. A motion by trustee Shipley, supported by Clerk Slater, to close tonight's public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are back in open session. Close whatever. Back to normal. We've got Chris Corey here from McKenna, the planner professional. It's time for the board to deliberate if it so wish or make some decisions or see where we're at as far as some of the sticking points. But before we get into that, I just want to remind everybody that we did start looking at the old one. We didn't just throw it away. We looked at it and it was so bad and contradictory in different places that we decided, well, a lot of this, most of the stuff is the same, but it needed to be rewritten so it wasn't duplicative, contradictory, all that kind of stuff. So we didn't just throw it out, but I understand the hesitancy and the concern. It was just a lot more efficient to make it read differently. And then we're focused on really important items of contention, but I just want to remind everybody how far we've come and how extensive it is and how there was so much thought and time put into this, partnering with professionals who actually are studied and trained to do this, that I hope as we deliberate more and as we pay attention, we'll see that there's a lot, much more that we agree on, not to minimize the current sticking points, but just that we have come a long ways and I think we're very close to the finish line on a really good product. So with that, let's talk about some of the zoning zoning issues with, I'm sorry, village.
Updates.
Updates. Yeah, can you start and then we can deliberate on village, I guess specifically the residential and density.
So.
That's an awkward direction, but we got to get into the residential.
The current October 1 draft in front of the board tonight does not allow residential in any of the four village zoning districts.
Which was a complete 1/8, which was a pretty big digression from what we had had worked up to throughout this whole process.
The recommended version from the planning commission included a sliding scale of residential density that roughly allowed two units per acre. Those smaller lots were allowed more units so that every unit, every lot in the village would be allowed at least one dwelling unit.
But then how did it take into account larger lots so that we keep hearing, we don't want to be like Ada or there's that Hudsonville development that's going in that's just really large with like high density, only residential? The big thing is even though we say we don't want to be like Ada, there's a lot of good stuff and there's a little bit of jealousy there. But then the flip side is if we don't want to go that high, that large, that kind of stuff. Can you talk about the scale with density and also then the form based code?
Sure. So the density as recommended by the planning commission for lots larger than, I believe it was three acres, it was a hard cap of two units per acre. Now that is it was a hard cap of two units per acre. Now that is less dense than your R2 single-family district. So your single-family subdivisions would be more dense than a large development in the village could be in terms of units per acre, as recommended by the planning commission. As you know, supervisor, the village zoning districts include the form-based elements, including things like architectural standards, site design standards, road frontage landscaping, sidewalk requirements, things of that nature too, that also enhance the village walkability. And all of that is still in the draft.
Thought we talked about allowing two?
I support doing the sliding scale that the committee, subcommittee came up with and then the planning commission recommended that, but that's for board deliberation. I think we also then pulled it back a little bit from that to two units per acre, which in my opinion is better than zero, but.
I have a concern with the setbacks on the buildings being at four feet from the sidewalk.
Good, valid concern, but we gotta talk about residential and density first.
It has to do with residential. If you're gonna put two units per acre in there and you got setback at four feet from a forty mile an hour traffic lane.
Well, but the setbacks, whether or not there's residential is kind of irrelevant to whether, how close we allow the buildings to the sidewalk.
And, and the setbacks are from the property line, not, yeah, not the road. So looking through, I pulled up GIS before the meeting, there are multiple businesses currently within the village area that are, there's a couple of them right on the property line currently. And we don't have any complaints about them, so I don't understand why we would want to now make new businesses have to push them back even further than that.
I am not gonna support anything less than ten feet.
Anywhere?
I want at least a green belt in there and a place to put a tree, and I want a place for kids to run if a car's coming over that sidewalk.
Which they currently have. You were just not looking at the, I don't think you are looking at where their actual property.
It was just down on Cascade Road, and I'm telling you what, you're not crossing that road. You're gonna get run over.
Where is it? I pulled up Kent County GIS, did some, you can see all the property lines when you go through there. It's a public website. I pulled it up on this computer right here. You can go through the village area. There's yellow marks where all the property lines are, and you can see, it's satellite imaging. So you can see the current businesses sitting on those property lines right at them. There is still green space, a sidewalk, more green space, and Cascade Road and/or twenty-eighth, Old Twenty-Eighth Street, depending which building you're talking about.
So the area we're talking about, right, is pretty small, basically the river or Thornapple River Drive up to?
Andrea hasn't pulled up.
It'd be on that stretch of Cascade Road between Twenty-Eighth Street and Thornapple River Drive essentially. Is that right?
In the current draft, the Village Core District, which runs roughly from the Roadhouse to the river along Cascade Road and also covers the Thornapple River Drive in that area, as well as some of the side streets like Orange, has a minimum setback requirement, again, this is the current draft, of three feet and a maximum front setback requirement of twenty-five feet along Cascade and ten feet along other roadways. So a property owner would have the option of going anywhere between three and twenty-five feet along Cascade, three to ten feet along all other roadways.
With the exception of the gathering place, I believe the closest building to Cascade Road is probably the Roadhouse, and that's probably around twelve feet. So we're, we're talking about if, pretend they rebuilt that tomorrow, and this was approved tomorrow, this, that building could essentially be nine feet, I didn't do my math right. It could be within three feet of the sidewalk, whereas it's currently around twelve feet out.
It's eighteen feet. I measured it the other day.
Is it?
But, but did you measure it from the property?
I measured from the building to the sidewalk.
That's what I'm saying.
And it's usually about a foot.
Zoning talks about though. The zoning is not, your, your setback is not from the sidewalk. Your setback is from the property line.
Property line's one foot basically from the side.
It's very close to the sidewalk on most properties.
How tall can these buildings be?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five foot tall building, four feet from the sidewalk.
That is not tall.
Three feet.
Well, with this property, it's okay. Four feet from the sidewalk, thirty-five foot tall building.
That's a two-story building and it just has, that's that little strip of Cascade Road. People always, if you want people to drive slower, when you drive slower naturally when it's more, more confined and you can still, we have trees, that is tree-lined, and it wouldn't change the tree line art, except where you, the road commission won't let us put additional ones, but that whole little strip is tree-lined.
What do we have?
Most importantly, Rishi from International Beverage, his, he's got a redevelopment plan that he came in with an initial design concept that was, hmm, I don't know, it didn't really, it was, it was more traditional what you'd expect out towards maybe the mall, that kind of stuff. He was completely happy to accommodate the form-based code, which took into account more traditional architecture, more classic, certain percentage of windows, brick, different, you have entryways traditionally at a certain spot. His two sticking points, which was gonna cost him more money, but his, what he needed in exchange to make it, the money work on his end, was two fewer parking spots, or just have a slightly adjustment in parking, and he needed that square footage because what building out closer to the, to the, reducing the setback gave him the square footage where it allowed him to be profitable. And I just think, and then the end result was such a better-looking, appropriate, it just would make a huge difference. I think if you're running and you're, I think the safety thing sounds good, but realistically, if a car goes off the road, five, six, it's not gonna do anything. When you think of like downtown Holland, downtown Lowell, I know we don't have a traditional downtown, but you bring stuff in, you still have the tree line, you still have grass, and naturally people are gonna slow down a bit more, I think. But most importantly, to get, it's gonna have a completely different look than it does right now, and I think it'd be amazing the way we have.
It will have a different look. It'll be three stories or thirty-five?
No, Timmy, it's two.
Thirty-five feet tall.
Yep. And if you actually look at thirty-five feet, that is not that tall. And what, what doesn't get talked about here is that we also made side setbacks deliberately. So, and then also you can't have the same architectural style, what multiple, you have to have variations so that you keep, it's basically the, the best example, and it's not, nothing's spot-on, but the gathering space and Frosty Boy, that, where you've got some green, it's trees, but then you have different types and they're kind of like smaller, separate buildings. You don't get the big giant Hudsonville sprawl. You don't get the Ada where it's four stories or three stories, brick made to look different, just you've got, it's a much smaller Cascade appropriate style. I thought we hit the balance and put a lot of time into it where you have the form-based code, which is a little bit more expensive, a little bit more quality. But then the flip side of that is it's worth it to people who own the property who want to redevelop because you get that additional space.
And some residential units.
And the residential units, which is what then makes the property values go up, largely funds that. And now that it's not just residential, we've got that first floor commercial requirement, which is huge. We don't have that right now.
So we also took Centennial from six, where you could go up to fourteen units per acre.
Yes.
So if you want fourteen units per acre, you can get that in Centennial, not a problem. Down in Glenwood, you can build them, how, fifteen units per acre down there. Star, you can do fifteen units per acre.
Can we revisit Star? I think we could go bigger on that.
We could possibly go bigger and, you know, maybe, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
We're hearing a lot of requests for density out there. I think.
We'll put all the density you want down and add into the township. Fine.
That is a good spot for it.
Yeah. But I'm not gonna have thirty-five foot tall buildings, three feet from the sidewalk.
And what's the setback for Old Twenty-Eighth Street?
Zero.
It's currently minimum zero, maximum ten. Though it is worth noting that the property lines on Old Twenty-Eighth Street are more than a foot from the sidewalk.
Yeah, they're closer to about eight or nine feet.
But on Cascade Road, I looked at the liquor store's survey stakes, they're just a few inches off the sidewalk.
Thirty-five feet is not tall. It's two stories max. It's not even two and a half.
You're not gonna have a two-story building, three feet from the sidewalk. It doesn't make sense. There's plenty of room for apartments or condos throughout Centennial, throughout Star, throughout Glenwood.
Yeah, but that's two different things.
Throughout the waterfall, throughout the, the office parks down there. I'm not, no, I'm not doing.
But setbacks and allowing residential are kind of too, they're apples and oranges a little bit, like they're not.
If you gotta have two units to make it all work, we can probably look at that. Here's what I'm thinking. We've got all these people in here right now. They all had comments on it. We're not agreeing here. We're no longer, we're not ready for this.
Timmy, we are.
No, we are not ready. Look at all, look at all this.
Yeah, welcome to the world of public hearing. This is, if you look at each one and how, and what has come up and the progression, you know why these people are here? Because some people on the board, not me, all of a sudden took what's been worked on for over a year, thoughtfully by professionals and other people, and balance, a delicate balance, and just ripped it all out. That's why these people are here. They weren't here before.
Yeah, they were here before.
Well, that's not you, Timmy, and I love you. That's not you.
Couldn't get them all into fire station.
And we heard those concerns too, and those concerns at the time were existing property owners. Well, one, it was kind of a lack of understanding and just kind of in general fears. It was general fearfulness, which makes sense. And we addressed those concerns with actual information. But the big thing was fear by existing property owners that somehow we're pushing them out or that there's no place for them, or that this zoning ordinance negatively affects them where they're at right now. And we were very, and we thoroughly answered those questions. It doesn't. If anything, congratulations, because we just minimized your competition. If you're an automobile shop or you're a car wash or something, you don't have to go anywhere. It's just when new developments happen, you can't have your parking in the front and you're not gonna have like an automobile shop. But that doesn't affect anybody who's already there, and it doesn't change how they have to operate at all. It doesn't negatively affect them. If anything, it just re, it just increases their property value going forward when they do sell sometime down the road. Their property values are higher. And then the flip side with existing property owners, another piece of the puzzle is the facade improvement program with DDA dollars, which are tax dollars from that specific DDA district where the Downtown Development Authority is offering, or is fortunately able to offer a fifty percent match grant for qualifying facade improvements to existing property owners. That's huge. The fact that they can do that, and that's really beneficial to existing property owners who are saying, we're so afraid that we can't keep up, it's gonna be super expensive, you're gonna, and then, and then that we push out businesses. No, if anything, we're gonna help the businesses that are there because you still have that requirement of first floor commercial. So if you are a hair salon or something else there, it's good for you. You've got more clientele. It doesn't hurt the businesses. So that was their initial big concerns. Those were addressed. These people are all here because you guys just haphazardly ripped out residential. I'd be here too if I were them.
Well, let's, let's talk about a few things here. So Glenn's talking about, he's gotta move, he wants to move into the, into the village. We're putting all the residential on the second floor. Seers don't want to be on the second floor above a commercial district. I don't understand that one. So we had a condo development down here, beautiful condos at the end of Thornapple River Drive. Those were all available. They were, they didn't move into those. I have problems with a building so close to the road. I have no problem with the beautiful designs of the form-based code, the bricks, the windows, all that. That's fine. But you're not a walkable village, not with all these five-lane roads going through. What are they, fifty thousand cars a day or about? You can't, you can't walk across that road.
Well, we did just buy Verbergs and we bought Toffee voluntarily because they were both gone out of business, and the plan right now is to make a connection. It's, we're not trying to be Ada. We're not trying to be Lowell. But we can improve and make parts of Cascade better, and if anything, we can stop that old, the Twenty-Eighth Street classic urban sprawl of big box stores, and we can maintain that quaint character a little bit, even though Cascade never really was a little village, but we can maintain that, and it's gonna be a heck of a lot more walkable when we've got that underground, the, along the river below Cascade Road.
And we are allowing hundreds of units of residential in Centennial and Star and Glenwood. You can have all, I mean, hundreds of units down in there.
Great. Let's talk about if the, if this board of seven has an appetite for including residential back into the, into the.
I still have problems with setbacks.
And then we'll get to setbacks and we'll talk about other stuff, because that's all fair game too, and it's, you're right. I disagree with you.
There's a lot of issues here that need to be dealt with.
I think we're dealing primarily with it right now, but yes, fine. That's why we had another voluntary, not required, public hearing. Is there an appetite? Raise your hand. No, 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 no. Hey, Timmy?
I wanna go down this.
You, you can. We're gonna talk about residential, if we're willing, if we're interested in bringing it back. We can figure out the density, but right now.
I also have issue with where this goes.
Yeah, great. Can it for a moment, so we can do a little panel, if we're interested in relooking at residential. Throw up hole, raise your hand, if, if you're open to considering residential.
I think it's a setback. I know you don't wanna hear that, but I think we need to negotiate.
Well, then like, well, then we need to talk about setbacks.
Yeah, I, I like.
May I make one comment about the last version? So at the last work session that we had, trustee Rissy pointed out that we still had language that addressed residential on the first floor, and that language was actually put in there specifically to address the issue that Timmy was talking about. And in that language, it said, "The first fifty feet of the first floor of a building closest to the roadway along Twenty-Eighth Street or Cascade Road shall not be a residential use." And that was put in there to mitigate some of the potential harm.
And since then, the board has requested that there be no residential uses on first floors, even if residential is allowed, which could be resisted, but that's the current direction we have, is that even if you do allow residential, it will be upper floor only in the village.
Okay, so I think that was at least four willing to talk about residential.
Oh, wait a minute. What, I think, did you say?
I didn't say anything.
Grace, Sue, Wendy, Shipley?
I think we should talk about residential.
About adding it back in.
I'm finally talking about it, but I agree, there's a lot of other parts that come with it.
Can I ask a clarifying question for us as staff? I really am struggling to understand the difference and the relevance between the setbacks and residential. So if you guys could somehow explain that to me, then it might help us answer some more questions.
Good way to word it. I was gonna say, you said it, and you said it, so do you wanna?
I suggested that, that the two issues I think Timmy may give on residential if we address setback. Is that a fair statement? That, that's where I was going, to suggest that they're connected.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're not, I know the three of us.
They're delivering and negotiating, and I feel like you're.
Well, no, I'm sitting here as the three of us trying to understand how the two come together, but if you guys.
They do connect, so explain to us how they connect.
Well, I'm trying to figure out here, trying to figure out why this form-based code VC goes all the way down to the water's edge of the river. There's residential lots and there were single-family homes came up again. Why is this, why is this form-based code going all the way down to the river?
That, I can answer that, as I think Andrea just did. That was consistent with the master plan that this board approved.
Okay, and then can we, the one comment we had in writing, or a comment from a resident who lived in the village area in a single, single, single-family residence?
She lives in a single-family residential home.
Did we, when we had, and so you've got a little part over by the church where there are some homes, did we include that, up until that last meeting where we took out residential, weren't, is it correct to say, single-family residents were allowed in the village area?
Yes.
In the Village Core because of those properties.
And if you think about a traditional village, I mean, most likely you wouldn't get one on Old Twenty-Eighth Street, but it's also not the end of the world if you got one.
I think that particular home was non-conforming under current zoning. Is that accurate?
To be honest, that property was incorrectly marked on the zoning ordinance, and we don't really know what their zoning was.
If it was village, I think the lot's too small.
It would still be allowed.
I mean, under the PUD that it's in, it's non-conforming, is that?
I don't believe it was ever part of that PUD and all the research.
But it is in fact part of that PUD and its legal description today, is it not?
No.
So is it identified on a map on that PUD?
Yes.
So then to suggest that it's not, we, we don't know. We would have to do additional research to be sure.
Which I did.
It is not.
Which I did, and I'm confident that our zoning map was incorrect. The legal description of the PUD does not have those persons.
So, so Andrew, up until that last meeting, if we would allow single-family residential in the village area, which means this, the houses along that area up to the river can stay as is. I don't think anyone, I'm not advocating for developing along the river, you know, the lower, I'm not touching that with a ten-foot hole. And I don't think you guys. And I don't think you guys want to either. So they can stay there as houses as long as they want, as far as I'm concerned.
The intent of the village core area, when that boundary was drawn during the master plan process, was that single family homes would be an allowable use. On roads other than Cascade Road or Twenty Eighth Street or maybe Old Twenty Eighth Street, and that was to be deliberated during the zoning process. If we are getting to the point where single family homes are not going to be allowable use in that district. Then I would advocate for changing the boundary. And putting the single family homes in a residential category. But that needs to, that, so that should, I think, be part of your discussion on residential in the village, uh, which is those existing single family homes, of which there was more than one. Uh, that would be made nonconforming if this boundary stays and no residential is allowed in the district.
I like the way we had it where we allowed the residential, but I didn't realize it was excluding Cascade and Twenty Eighth, like you said. That makes sense. It's kind of the traditional, what you think of the historical village area. So, so to your question or concern about why it goes up to the river, I think that's why. We're not looking to develop the riverfront.
Maybe, maybe we should exclude that.
Because we just said, I mean, you could do that.
We're not looking to develop it. Why we, why not just leave it the way it is? Why, why put it in form based code?
Was there a reason why we included, why, when we drew the boundaries with the village? What was the?
For some of those houses, they are in the current B one district. Already. Uh, so that was part of it. There are some houses where the master plan envisions a potential redevelopment into mixed use or a commercial.
But that's not, that, that is on the other side of.
Potentially, yes.
And that's kind of over by the gathering place Lima, I think.
Yeah. And, and there was discussion, again, this goes back to the master plan process, which kicked many of the details to the zoning ordinance process as is appropriate, but laid out the vision. There, at that time, there was the thought that. Single family homes might be incorporated into the form base code. Uh, in terms of design, which we have not pursued. So. Uh, these are all now, I think, items to be, be addressed by this board as you determine what your final vision is for how. This area should be developed and redeveloped.
And do you think we're going to get that done tonight?
I think the, when you, the way you're trying to stir the pot. Especially, I, I think.
This pot's been stirred before I got here.
This pot, Mr. Rissy, treasurer of myself, twenty plus meetings, two hours. And I know, we're not going to all agree. We're not going to keep everybody happy. And we're not all going to agree here, but if you take into account what we're disagreeing on, it's a small amount. So to just throw up your hands at this point and be like, we're just, what are we going to do? Like, we are so close, so we got to actually talk about it. And the big discussion is residential, and it sounds like a majority of the board right now. Is open to putting residential back in where it was over the past year before it was just.
Well, let's talk about residential then. Old Twenty Eighth Street.
Twenty of those meetings, I don't understand, but whatever.
I, I was. Let's talk about Old Twenty Eighth Street. So. Right now, the way this is drafted, I have difficulty in supporting it with zero foot setback. But if I, I could. I could see residential buildings being there that were further back, particularly, uh, on the south side of the road where you've got a big hill in the back. If they were built towards the rear of those lots, but right now, if you pass this.
If you have a concern with placement.
I do.
I, I get it, but hold on, you've got two different, that's a site design component and then you've got a land use component.
But it's not, because if, if the building's going to be up close to the road, I don't want a lot of density there.
Yeah, but so you're talking, so there's a design component and then there's the use, density has to do with use, residential. That the, the setback is the design component. So in theory, you want. Are you guys, are you guys saying that you would be fine with a zero lot setback if it was still just commercial? I, I mean, that's what you.
No, I'm, I'm still not, I'm, I'm not in favor of that either.
Well, then, then they're not related. They're not related. What you're saying, two things.
I don't think it's right to let somebody build in front of another business.
That's, then that's separate. Then you're saying, no matter what, whether it's, I think, help me if I'm wrong, you're saying if it's commercial and no residential, you still don't want a zero lot line.
Correct.
So no matter what. So I, I guess I, I don't.
And hang on, I don't think.
What's the inner?
Chris, explain this to, if I have a business on Old Twenty Eighth Street, I've. Nobody can, redeveloping doesn't mean I'm going to keep my one business and then put a new business in front of that because I.
Well, I mean.
I don't want anybody to put a new business.
Let me clarify. Let, let me, let me clarify. Okay, if, uh, one of the businesses on Old Twenty Eighth Street. Decides to redevelop their property and they build a, I'm going to call it a three story building, thirty five feet high. Because you can fit three stories in thirty five.
Can't, timeout. Let's ask the experts. Thirty five feet. And then you have to take into account all the stuff you have to do on the inside. We went through this in our subcommittees. You cannot, if there's three stories, don't work. It doesn't work. We did it on purpose that way. You can't do it.
You can potentially fit like a half story under a peaked roof with dormer windows or something like that. You're going to have a hard time.
For short people.
You're, you're going to have a hard time, I think, creating a high quality residential unit that is only on that floor, but you may get a, a, an upper floor bedroom space. For something that has second floor.
Two story building right up against the road.
Again, not against.
Now, okay, there's going to be a restaurant or something else right next door that's set thirty five or forty feet back. It's going to take. Decades for that whole stretch to get redeveloped. It's going to look ridiculous.
So then what, you keep it, you keep it at a bad design so that, that it.
No.
With it, so like, you know what I mean? Like you're just, you're not going to do better. We might as well stay crappy because.
I just said, we push the taller buildings towards the back by where the hill is and the, and the forest.
Because they're not tall, they're thirty five feet, no matter what. You don't get thirty five and then fifty and sixty. You get two stories.
And that's the idea with the form base code. The idea with the way this form base code was developed is that you can put. Multiple different types of business or of building styles next to one another, whether they're near the road.
You can't have any of the same.
And they will all start to blend in occasionally because it is going to look more eclectic and not like we're trying to make everybody look the.
Someone might be a little embarrassed. And if they really let their place go and they've got parking in the front, I mean, I don't know, they might look, they might be a little embarrassed when their neighbor starts looking really good. But the flip side is their neighbor just really increased their property value. Culturally. They're sitting on a lot more valuable piece of property.
Supervisor last branch. I would, uh, be open to. Some residential.
Thank you, trustee Nord Dyke.
I would like to see a greater setback on Old Twenty Eighth Street. I had a nice conversation with our treasurer earlier tonight. And I pointed out East Miles Dentistry, which is by my map, a twelve foot to property line. I don't know if that's what you're seeing.
Seven and a half, so I don't know.
And, but yeah, I don't, but.
GISs are not consistent. We would need a survey. It's probably.
That's, I think the, I, I just, it's a building that is relatively new. Uh, that I think would fit our form based code in terms of its character and design. And I think it could be a good reference point.
So what about me? Ten?
Could you do ten?
I don't want to argue.
Then I said, did I have seven and a half? Yeah, right.
Let's just go measure it. Like, it looks good. And I think it's a.
And it's definitely not zero.
It's a fair compromise on Old Twenty Eighth Street.
There's no parking in the front.
There is no parking in the front.
There's not room when it's.
There's a driveway and it's behind.
A lot of green.
There's a lot of green.
It's, if it is thirty five feet, sure doesn't seem very tall.
I don't know that it's thirty five feet, but, uh, it has nice vaulted ceilings, so perhaps it is more than a traditional single story. So. I, I don't know if that's helpful to you.
And I'm just thinking steps, yes, it is helpful. Steps forward as we move this. And give clarity to staff as we, as we update and this zoning draft.
Okay, I gotta, I want to talk about what he just said. So. If we look at. A range potentially. What about ten to twenty feet?
I want to see what it is. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to, like, I just. Let's see what it is because one map says one thing, one says another. I think Andrew is absolutely right that the GIS is just not as accurate, but I know by looking at it that it looks good. And like, I'm just curious what comes back. What if it's five? You know what I'm saying? Like. Let's measure it. We have time on this. I don't think we're in a rush to pass this, I don't think.
So, well, and I think then the question becomes. Is then the majority of the board okay with what? With.
I, in.
Because otherwise, if they're not, there's no reason for them to go measure it and figure it out.
No, no, this is, this is just one trustee's opinion. There's a building that is there today. That I think meets a lot of the characteristics that you're trying to go for.
And that's separate from, let's not, let's, we're, let's focus on the setback itself.
Well, it's inclusive of that. And that, that, I, I'm trying to find compromise wherever I can. To me, that thing. We go look at the street face. It's, it's a beautiful job.
Would you take that same setback down Cascade Road then?
Yeah, I remember I have a problem.
I, I have a problem.
Gathering place is just about right on the, right at it. Zero, just about.
I think bringing it closer on Cascade Road in that small little area naturally helps to slow down traffic. And you're killing Rishi's opportunity.
I agree with you. And we currently have businesses that are at zero. Looking at the map that nobody's complained about and.
And it doesn't change that green strip with trees.
I have a problem with brand new buildings being built that close to the road because I don't think you're really planning. Uh, when I started driving years ago, this is going to kind of age me, but Twenty Eighth Street was one lane each direction. So was Patterson and it was a four way stop. So there's been some improvement since then, some population growth since then, and the roads had to get wider to add, well, I don't know, five lanes plus turn lanes. How are you going to do that on Cascade Road if you put a building four feet from the sidewalk?
I don't think we want to.
Can. You're going to have to tear down a building when the growth gets there.
But, but they.
You're not planning.
Have to buy, they don't have.
Yeah, they don't have the legal right away anyways.
I, I think that we.
You're not planning, you're not looking at these things for thirty five to fifty years out either.
You're, we're proactively ensuring that the growth we get is smart and that complements Cascade character. If we just let it go to what, you know, for just. Unbridled growth, or if we plan for the, people have been clear that they don't want, um. A huge, like, yeah, I mean, there's a housing shortage, but it's not on Cascade residents to tank our property value so that we can get a bunch of cheap housing. I mean, everything's a balance. The whole point is smart, appropriate. Growth to scale, not, hey, we're going to make it just in case seven lanes down the road, that big rush of people.
One road.
If Cascade Road were a starter community, ever, no one except.
Certain areas. I'm going to tell you, I was going to bring this up, but it, I don't think it's relevant in this particular scenario because the communities are different. But yes, I came from that community which was bussing at the seams. They are going and boulevarding that state trunk line and it's through M dot. It's not through the community. So there is a joint effort there. And the state is purchasing property, private property to do proper turnarounds. It doesn't mean the development can't happen. By any means. There are ways to get it done and work with our other partners to get it done, but you're talking about a community that is a hundred thousand people in Metro Detroit. Versus the twenty thousand people here on the. On the outskirts of Grand Rapids. So I, I, I think the comparison, although the. The reference is not lost because of the state truck line. The communities are apples and oranges. And I don't think that you could, you can do that.
May I also point out that decreasing setbacks is the only tool that a local municipality has against. A. A county or state. Road commission expanding those roads. So you actually want to use that tool to prevent the widening of a road in the future.
See, and I could see lately, especially with Thornapple River Drive being closed, the need in the future for a second left hand turn lane on Cascade Road to Twenty Eighth Street. And I have a feeling that if that need ever arises, the road commission is going to push real hard to put that lane in. Because right now the traffic's backing up all the way to the island by the barber shop at, at, at rush hour on a, you know. Regular.
Island is still there.
No, yes, but not right now if we want to be productive.
Yeah.
Oh, you know why? It's more expensive to take it out and the property owners that were nearby said, but if you take it out after some. Prior leadership put it in, it's going to kill their business when they, when we take the time to take it out and spend the money. So they didn't want it taken out even though they don't want it there because it's going to be, um.
It looks really nice now.
Let's, let's keep on.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
I will note, for the purposes of this discussion, the setback requirement, the minimum setback requirement at the corner of Cascade and Twenty Eighth Street is twenty five feet on all sides of the intersection. In the current draft. That is beyond the area where the small setbacks are, are in the current draft.
So outside of that core?
Yes, that is in the area designated as Thornapple Center. It's outside of the core and the setbacks are set at twenty five feet. At minimum with a maximum of fifty.
So I could be open to two units per acre down in the Thornapple. Center. If we get the green belt of ten feet.
He just said the setback from Thornapple Center.
Down, way down Cascade Road.
Okay, that's not Thornapple Center.
He's just got his stakes out there, just a couple inches off the sidewalk. Give me ten foot, ten foot green belt in there and I can get a tree in there.
I don't quite understand. Are you saying? Like.
Ten foot from edge of road, what, what?
Edge of sidewalk.
Edge of, so from road to sidewalk and then from sidewalk to building, you want to see ten foot.
Sidewalk is, you just build as planned.
With grass, something green, a tree.
And again, on the sidewalk, there are established trees and grass on the other, between the road and the sidewalk.
Now with a new building, Rissy's not, and Rissy's going to have that much space.
No, no, no. This, it's between the sidewalk and the road.
That's seven foot. There's seven foot of grass.
I'm saying that, with those gra, the grass and the trees that are there are not going anywhere.
Right.
Now granted, Rishi's is.
Green space on the other side of the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the building. And ten feet is not accessible.
Right, so setbacks, if you guys are also saying you don't want setbacks, whether it's commercial or residential, the relative, like, the two are not, I haven't heard how you guys have. How they're related. I get your desire, but I don't see how they're related. So let's have the discussion first about residential and density. And then we can talk about setback. And we said a majority of the board now has an appetite to recon, to go back to what we've been at.
He just said too, if there's setbacks.
And you said in, in Thornapple Center.
Cascade Road.
What is it? The VC and the TC and the VC?
It, it was before, Chris and, Chris, can you just? The draft that came up through the subcommittee and the planning commission, what that was, then we did the two thing and then the zero, but we're back to. Trying to get some structure and clarification.
Uh, Director Hendrick has the density as it was recommended by the planning commission, I think available on our computer. Am I right about that? Can we show it? Yeah, there it is. Right, that's it. So this is the language as recommended by the planning commission. It, the first, so subsection one addresses the single family house issue. It says, no more than two dwelling units shall be constructed on any property unless that property also contains a commercial use. Therefore, you could have. One dwelling unit with no commercial use and the single family homes are protected. So that's not what number one was intended to be. Um, this is all dwelling units accessory to commercial use should be located on the second floor of a mixed use building. Um, and, and that is consistent with the board's direction that that's what you guys want to see. Um, in, in a mixed use context rather than, you know, housing units in the back or something like that. You have to be upstairs. Then it says, the maximum number of dwellings on a property shall be lots under point five acres, two dwelling units. Note that for some of those smaller lots. You would be more than two dwelling units per acre, but for the absolute number would be two. Uh, lots between point five and one acres, four dwelling units. Again, as you get closer to half an acre rather than one acre, you're going to be exceeding two units per acre. But there's a hard cap of four. Lots between one and three acres, six dwelling units. Again, as you get closer to one acre rather than three, you're more than two units per acre, but you've got the hard cap of six. And then finally, anything over three acres. So any of our larger, um, development sites that might be. Uh, envisioned as more of a residential complex rather than a single building with a few, with a few units in it, residential, commercial. Uh, that's two dwelling units per acre. Um, as I noted, that is actually less dense than your R two, single family district.
Good on arrival.
And again, this is less.
That's fair to say, so.
But it's less dense than the single family residential.
Like.
Less dense than that.
Four dwelling units on one acre.
That's considered in many communities, single family density. Your single family district is less dense than that, but it's more dense than two units per acre.
It's two point four units per acre as our single-family.
Is your single, is your R2 single-family, yes. And you have some planning developments that have lots smaller than that uh, in exchange for dedicated green space and things of that nature.
And lots between one and three, so like one point one acres could have six dwelling units, no.
But that was, wasn't that so that those smaller lots could have two, they can't have?
No, it says one to three, so one point one will be allowed six dwelling units, no.
Yeah, but can you explain that?
Uh, yeah, that was, we had to draw a cutoff somewhere and we drew it there. I, obviously the board can adjust these numbers accordingly. Or you don't have to use this uh, system at all. However, what the system does is it protects the smaller lots and ensures that they have a reasonable amount of development that they can do relative to their size while protecting the village against oversized developments that would come to dominate it by becoming a very large percentage of the residential housing, very large percentage of the building stock. And to concerns that have been expressed by this board, create issues of traffic congestion, uh, lack of character, et cetera. Um, so the entire, the entire purpose of the sliding scale is to empower the small lots and decrease the potential of the large lots to be overdeveloped.
Makes sense, I, I support that.
I support it as well.
I do not.
Chris, do you live in this township?
Hang on, let Sean speak.
The, the only thing that I'm concerned about is the high-density potential of smaller lots, is that correct?
Yes, I, I, I mean, you can see the numbers here, if you're under a point five acres, you could have two dwelling units.
What's Rishi's size, do you remember? About point six acres, point six, so he could have, so you, if you're under?
Under this, that particular lot could have, have four dwelling units.
Four dwellings.
Under Rishi's?
Yes, though, yes, though we would, he would have a difficult time and, and I, I realize that this does not change the concern that's been expressed to us. He would have a difficult time fitting four dwelling units at eight hundred square feet each in under thirty-five feet of total building height and meeting his entire parking requirement for both his business and the residential units, which is what? Uh, one and a half spaces per residential unit in terms of parking? So while the density calculation would allow it on point six acres, he might have a tough time actually fitting it.
So what in addition to the?
For the details that subcommittee looked.
Yes, and so, can you talk about some other limitations or I used to call them safeguards? And so one is, because initially, remember initially, this, the, the form-based space code itself, it included the parking requirements, the height restrictions, all that different stuff, setbacks, materials, all that different stuff? Were, were limits on their own, so we didn't even have a density number in there, which rightly so, concerns certain people. And we added that in addition to then the density, but can you talk a little bit about? So we've got a number here, but it's not just the number, you also have to meet other things, can you talk about those other things?
So um, there are setback requirements as noted and as discussed, and I suppose that is an overlap between the residential and setback discussions. Uh, there are parking requirements, there are landscaping requirements. And most importantly, there's a minimum size of the dwelling unit and a maximum building height. Uh, obviously, those have been both brought up, the minimum size of dwelling unit is six hundred and fifty square feet plus a hundred and fifty feet per bedroom. And you do not allow studios, so it's eight hundred square feet is your minimum. You mu- so um, in order to fit eight hundred square foot units in a building that can really only be two and a half stories and enough parking, as you get to the smaller ends of these ranges, you're probably unlikely to be able to max the density listed in the range. However, I, I'm, I understand that probably unable is, is not sufficient protection in the minds of some folks. So uh, that may be something to discuss.
So there's also sign of that.
So why put the number in there if it's very hard to do?
Yeah, what if we, board?
That's why we didn't.
What if we, as a board then, took out B and put A to B lots under an acre, two dwelling units?
Oh.
And then lots between, anything over one acre is just two units per acre. So if you're under one, you can do the two. And then if you're over one acre or greater, it's two units per acre. I think that's the number that.
And they couldn't like take lots that they have today that are over an acre and?
Split, no, because that's part of the, there's, that's part of this restriction somewhere else that we, we.
That's, that's actually in, in section C here, that's been removed from the current ordinance, but could be added back in, which is to prevent the split, that was why that was in here, it was so that people couldn't split and get extra density on land that would not have been allowed that many units before.
So how about if we do that? We, I think that what we're hearing is to. We're getting rid of B and C, kind of. We're changing A to be lots under one acre and have two dwelling units. So if you already have a lot.
When it's one, if you're over an acre.
Over an acre, it's two units per acre.
So if they have an acre, one point two five, they're still only getting two.
Right, at one point five, they can have three.
And no bonuses.
In the village, I don't think there's any.
Not that structure, no.
So I think that that gets us to allowing the small units to still be able to get, hang on. That allows the small u- small lots to still capitalize on putting some sort of dwelling units in there. Um, but then it also limits the, the big, the weird ranges between the one and three, which is six per and, and I agree, I mean.
Say the acreage again. Because I think there's lots in there that are only four thousand square feet, I'm not gonna allow them two dwelling units.
What, what lot are you talking about? No, tell me.
I don't have them in front of me, but I was told there's lots in there that are four thousand square feet.
What if it's?
Quarter of an acre?
Yeah.
Andrew, Andrew, we've talked about this in the subcommittee, what is, on like old Twenty-Eighth Street area, what, what are our smaller lots?
Has big ones, I think it's like the Orange Street.
I mean, Rishi's is pretty small.
What size is that?
It would be again, point six acres.
Say that again.
Point six acres. Um, one of the lots in the church is point five acres.
I don't think we have much, but my point is we don't have much under point five.
Is it only under point five?
Do you know any that are under point, I know we're putting you on the?
Yeah, there, there are some that are under. If I had to guess, there's a hundred in the whole thing, maybe ten to fifteen. There's approximately a hundred parcels that we're talking about, that's.
Touch wide.
How many under?
No, in, in a hundred parcels.
Total in the village, sorry.
Quarter.
Probably barely any.
Because I think that's the thing, because if we did lots, a quarter of an acre to point five, get two dwelling units. Or under.
That's a very small acre.
Well, you said under one acre gets two, what was the other one? Over an acre, it's two per acre.
Nothing under a half acre gets anything.
Point, yeah.
But then we're eliminating a whole group of.
Yeah, you should be able to get something.
Wait, we want to have a village, a village has, which our village does have in some areas, smaller lots that we want to see commercial on the bottom and one or two units on the top, that's a village.
If you have a half acre, you should be allowed.
Could we have this?
Closer Asian, that would be helpful, like.
If we, if we, we're not gonna vote on this tonight, can we get from staff a distribution of acreage sizes in the village? Because right now, we're guessing, like I, I think Wendy may be onto something.
That's fine, but also I'm, we're, yes, it's fine, good idea. We're trying to provide clarification and direction as they prepare the draft.
I think this is the direction. What I just said, have that written up for our next meeting for us to look at. But then also, we need a breakdown of the lot size, I love the, under a quarter, how many there are?
List every lot that's under a half, I think that's.
But I want to know how, I want to know the size, because again, under a quarter. So that's why I, I'm. And the reason this wrench is being thrown in is because Timmy thinks we have a lot, what size, Timmy?
I think you've got four thousand square foot lot in there somewhere.
Okay, so that's why. I want to see that on there too, which one's four thousand square feet?
What is, what's four thousand square feet? Forty by a hundred?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but the point is, which lot, to meet which lot, that's the point.
Well, she's gonna get there.
Yep, can't wait to see.
Time out, do you have a, not even time out, time in, do we have a draft of like, does that make sense as far as language?
We can.
Well, no, it doesn't, because I, I'm sorry, I, with all due respect, I'm not gonna waste time on writing language when we have to go provide data on a hundred parcels with the maximum lot size and then apply us, this density that was just discussed to that, to show what the, the possible exposure is, you know.
Why not write it and then we can adjust it based on the data?
I think it was just written, it's what.
You guys have what you need to.
But I'm not gonna go through and change the draft on that if we're just gonna hash it out again, we'll bring it, the information back for a talking point. We've been criticized enough for writing drafts and updating the drafts and people are upset that we keep making these changes to the draft itself. So I think it's more appropriate that we just get the data and have the conversation, to be really honest with you.
I'd rather just make the draft change and I don't think the data's gonna push one or the other because you can picture what it is and what it would allow. I don't see why. I don't understand what the, I mean, other than curiosity, I don't understand why that gets us.
Chris, going back to your square footage scenarios, if you had a four thousand square foot lot, would you be able to put two dwelling units on there and a commercial space and your parking? And your green space requirement?
There you go, that's, that's.
It would be difficult, I, I mean.
That's the question.
It will take care of itself.
That is the question, it's not, we need to see a printout of everything.
You gotta restrict it from the size, nothing under the size gets.
This is, this is the question.
Restrict it.
Chris, what can you get on that, what Wendy said with the fourth, assuming there's one out there, a four thousand square foot in this little village core area and you have to meet all the other requirements?
That's a lot, that's a lot of math to say.
And, and again, not gonna hold you to, but just, this is.
Six to, so you need sixteen hundred, so you've got four thousand total square feet of land area you're working with. Sixteen hundred square feet need to go into the two dwelling units if you're gonna try to do that. Now, they could be stacked on top of each other, except they really can't because you also need commercial space underneath of at least sixteen hundred square feet to put six, you know, to put that on top. Um, and then you have to fit parking for everybody, so.
Eighty square foot per parking space.
How many?
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Press drive vials.
To be above commercial, therefore that also has parking requirements. So now we're talking about six to seven parking spaces.
But I, I, I think the.
Concern, it's a fate, it's a, when you flush it all out and have to see all the little pieces together.
Anything under ten thousand square foot shouldn't have any potential on it if it's.
What?
Why?
Ten thousand square feet is a quarter acre.
Wait, that's like, what, I don't understand where you're coming from.
It's a quarter acre, why do you want two units on a quarter acre?
What we're saying is that all the other requirements will take care of that, it will take care of.
Put it in there, say anything under ten thousand square feet, no.
Because it's easier to put in that just.
Because you want a legally.
Make or get two dwelling.
No, you want a legally enforceable document that provides a clear roadmap for developers, so even if, and property owners, so even if they don't.
Funny, Timmy.
Even if they don't like it, at least it's clear and they, and what we heard from people is that they really appreciate clarity. And the flip side.
Under ten thousand.
No.
Feet is clear.
That's not clarity, because you have to look at it with, in conjunction with the form-based code and the, the site design components and the land use components. So you can't just say, Timmy, I'm gonna say arbitrarily ten thousand square, that's not how it works, you can't. Because you've got the site, you, the, the site design and the land use components and they all work together, which is why it took so long and it was so thoughtful. Can't just start coming in and saying, I'm gonna pick a number and throw it out there and that's what you need, you can't do it. Scott, we were in so many. I do too.
I, you know, maybe we need to tweak the way.
So I think instead of sending, instead of going down another rabbit hole of, of, of an assignment for staff to gather, let's be a board and show leadership skills and give some clarity and direction on draft language so that we can come back a little further in this. Not that that was a terrible idea, Chris, I'm just trying to move this.
Draft the language and just modify it based on the data, like I think we can change the numbers ever so slightly based on the data.
Do you, do you understand though? And I'm not, I'm being honest, do you understand though that the scenario that was presented to us on a four thousand square foot lot cannot happen based on these other requirements?
It's like if you're a guy, you can't get pregnant because you just can't get pregnant, like you don't, you don't have to worry about it.
But didn't answer the problem. Like if Chris would just say, no, you can't do it, I think Timmy would be like, fine.
Well, then Timmy needs to say that, Timmy, you need to be more open-minded and listen to people.
I'm listening.
And try to interpret their communication style because Chris communicates really well from over here.
I, I, I can't commit to the fact that you couldn't do that, I, I, it seems to me that if you were to create a line somewhere on the sliding scale under which you get one unit, period, that seems fair to me, but I'm not, I, I don't, I'm not on the board.
I propose that we bring this draft back for approval with that change Wendy made and let's vote on it next time.
Let's, can we just clarify the, the actual language that we want to direct staff?
If I can interject again about language, the language that you're wanting us to create is right in front of you. It's up here, the numbers are what's gonna change, the elimination of an A, B, C, or D is what's going to change.
Yeah.
What you guys are wanting and what I'm understanding is you still want the data pulled for the district.
No, I don't. Because we're literally, I, no, I mean.
We wanna finish.
So do you understand the predicament that the three of us are in? Sitting here, trying to put together a document, like, I just, I just trying to be real with everybody. So the, the language that's wanted is presented.
Sorry, the change that Wendy proposed?
I, no.
I think, I want to finish.
Me too, because we're really.
This isn't gonna happen.
I don't want to make a lot of changes.
We're not saying it's gonna happen tonight. But it's almost like we have something really good and it's just, we're not gonna go backwards.
Make that one adjustment and let's.
I don't think people realize how most, a lot of people would think this is laughable because they'd be like Cascade Township, you guys think you're gonna get this? Good luck, because it's so low to begin with, like. And I think we can because we're in a fortunate situation where it's a desirable community to live and people will pay, there's a desire for condos and people will pay. But I don't think that you guys are understanding how restrictive. We're not looking, ninety-nine percent of the developers would be like, this is, this is a stupid conversation. But we're not looking for ninety-nine percent, we can be fortunately a little more selective and find that one percent. But this is, this is like splitting hairs. This is so contained. Just have to hit it a couple times.
Can I throw something out of left field?
Sure.
What about one unit for every third acre?
I don't know.
I'm just putting it out there, like, then it's not a bunch of things, it's just one multiple.
But, but the sliding scale helped because it protected the smaller lots while limiting the big lots, so there was a thought, like.
Okay, I'm just.
And.
Said it was in left field, that'd be a good idea.
Come back to center, Chris.
No, I'll just keep throwing them and you can bat them away, it's fine.
What did you come up with, Wendy, what is your, what is your plan?
This isn't my plan, Timmy, this is a proposal to the board and your condescending attitude is just killing me tonight.
Sorry.
I believe.
Our plan is that you are no longer allowed to speak and you will sit there until we're finished with the sports business.
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
She said less than one acre gets two. Lots less. Greater than, greater than an acre is two per acre.
Period.
What's the setback, are we, do I still?
We're not talking. We're not there yet.
Right yet.
Whatever they said.
Because of what Andrea said, using the setback as a tool to prevent for the development by the road commissioner MDOT.
Yes.
Right? I think we should go with that.
But hold on, so, so time out, Jade.
She just said it again, are we good with this?
Does, I get that you're feeling confused, but I think.
Hold on, I'm not, I'm keeping up, I'm just saying that the I understand that last bit that was said.
Do you understand the draft language?
He just doesn't know the directive, he understands what we're talking about.
Okay, the directive is.
Keep changing, first we want to do A, B, C, D, any of.
Raise your hand, informally as a trustee, raise your hand if you are um, you are comfortable directing staff to, to, to modify the, to, to make the draft language as reflected by Treasure Course Stange specifically.
Wouldn't ask, just ask for the data and have the language?
No.
No.
Well, but can they not?
Not gonna change it.
But you can't be.
It could, when we reconvene.
Time out, if you say and, and also I want.
It's not it, I'm, I'm supporting it, I just want the data to look at, that's all.
Get it later, yeah, sure.
That's what he wants, he wants to see it later, that's all he wants.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking for it now.
Got it.
Later.
Okay, does that make sense, Andrea, Chris?
It's, it's exactly has, was written ten minutes ago.
I think honestly, this is huge, we should all be, this is very exciting.
Did we?
So with that change, are we prepared to introduce it at the next meeting?
Uh, we got a couple other, I'm assuming, let's, I think that was the biggest thing, Timmy's not happy still, so it's a good sign.
Everybody's not gonna be happy all the time.
No, no, but this, this is good, this is.
So we have changed still the, the lots from one to three acres at?
No, it's just greater than one.
It's two acres.
Two units per acre, you have any, so you have one point. Yeah. And it doesn't, it doesn't mess up this weird, you could get way too many in there.
Right. Right.
You just said one point five to get three.
You do, greater than one, it's two per acre, so if you have one point five, you get three.
That's.
But but more than, we're not, there's the majority, yes. Onward. All right, um, village setbacks, setbacks.
I think Chris had made a mention of, which I know this is not a great directive, but finding out, what's the name of the dentist office?
The address is sixty-seven fifteen Old Twenty-Eighth Street.
Exact number of that, and I I, you know, and I feel personally Cascade Road should be a a range of zero to whatever, we already have current business at zero. I think that's something we can discuss right now because that's one that we can see, but the Old Twenty-Eighth Street, Andrea, I do think we're gonna have to know.
Yep.
Right?
I'm looking for the old plans, we'll find them, cuz then we'll have a survey, I think it's gonna be more accurate than staff going out and measuring.
You're right, the old survey.
I just need to correct something you just said, and I believe I'm looking at the right version, the, it is not a zero setback on Twenty-Eighth Street.
What was the?
Feet, I don't, on Twenty-Eighth Street in the Village Core, in Thornapple Center, it's twenty-five feet.
Right, and then what about on Cascade Road, the village, sorry, I'm getting the names all messed up, so like.
Cascade Road.
Yeah.
Three feet.
Okay.
Yep, or twenty-five feet. There is no, there is no zero other than Old Twenty-Eighth.
I'm fine, I'm fine with pushing, Rishi's current plan is, um, is it four to seven?
Rishi's plan complies with the current.
The three.
I think it's four to seven because remember his building does not.
It sits on an angle.
Current or proposed?
Oh, supposed.
Both.
Proposed, current.
Oh, no, oh, it's current building, sorry, proposed, proposed, yes, sorry.
I was thinking, it's current.
That's, that's how I understood it too, sorry.
I think it's four to seven because it's not perfectly parallel.
Or by Orange Street and then it beers off and ends up in seven.
I'm good with the three feet, the the way it's written now, especially since we currently have businesses that are zero.
And it's such a small, small area.
Besides the, besides the gathering.
That's it, that's what I'm talking about.
I don't think it's actually a zero, I think it's closer to the three feet.
I don't think it looks terrible, especially on that little tiny strip, and that does help to make drivers slow down. I'm not saying it's a, it's a magic tool, but it certainly helps when you get that, and that's where we need to slow traffic down.
The sense of being, whether it actually is or not, makes you go slower.
And there are trees along the streets, not that it's, but that stay.
So the gathering place is zero and I think the barber is sixteen?
Twenty, maybe.
Paying attention, but I think it's sixteen.
Maybe twenty-three.
Like, I was trying to get a variance of what we're dealing with right now, so.
So we're not, this is, the point too is, the concern about Old Twenty-Eighth Street where we have businesses currently sixty to eighty feet off the road.
Right.
And we're gonna pull people forward is not gonna happen on Cascade cuz all of our businesses are currently much closer to the road to begin with. So if we can get new ones to push in even closer to the three feet, it would be even better.
Wendy makes a good point there, our, our current zoning, as it sits now, was written to attract big box stores. And big box stores were pushed back a bit, so we had wider setbacks, bigger parcel sizes like around three acres. And the new zoning kinda has the emphasis going back the other way, away from the big box stores.
I think.
But I do think on Old Twenty-Eighth Street, we should have a setback.
I think that's, I agree with that.
We're not gonna decide that tonight, Old Twenty-Eighth.
That's when they're gonna go measure the.
Gonna measure those, we're not gonna talk about that, we're talking about Cascade Road though, keeping them at the three feet or whatever.
Just some food for thought, we're gonna do two things when we go out to Old Twenty-Eighth, cuz I know how the next conversation's gonna go is what is.
How far is the back, you know?
So when we go out, we will look at the desired parcel, measure that. But well, I know Andrea already has most of this data, she showed it several times tonight and they're rough numbers, but we do have rough numbers for what the maximum setback is. And some of those are pretty large, some of them, it's on the north side are not, so I just, food for thought to start thinking about that.
I think I.
That'll be the next question, cuz if we, if we change the zero lot line on Old Twenty-Eighth, the maximum right now is ten, so the maximum's gonna have to change. So I just wanna plant that seed.
And I'm fine with pushing it back on Twenty-Eighth Street a little, Old Twenty-Eighth Street, I think on Cascade Road for that small amount that are affected, the three feet needs to stay as is, especially cuz of the project that's.
I feel that the idea with Old Twenty-Eighth Street, it's not gonna happen overnight though, is to get those parking lots out of the front of it. That is the part that makes it not feel like a village, not make it feel walkable when you have parking lots that people are coming and going from.
It's true.
To have a business front close by with green.
Down the road, it's gonna happen overnight, but you look at like that new lawyer's office and then Portobello Road where the.
The dentist office is that way too.
Yep, and that just has a much different feel than Tudor Time. Not that those people have to change, but it's just talking about future development patterns.
What about if JT's wants to add a twenty percent addition, do we put language in there that a minimum addition where they won't have to conform to the new zone, the new form-based code?
So as currently drafted, n- nobody has to change their setbacks unless they want to. So, yeah, but as far as the architecture, the current draft is that in any expansion of the footprint triggers the full architectural. But of course, that's up for board discussion.
I personally would like to see, say, twenty percent or less addition to the current building footprint would not require or initiate the form-based code.
I personally wouldn't want to because twenty percent is one-fifth, and if you're gonna mess with the, it's just, it kicks in with the facade, the front, and you've got, and you're an existing owner, you've got a DDA matching grant available. If you're gonna mess with.
It's gonna make sense for them to take advantage of it, but I'm saying, like, I, I think of the guy who has the garage, the the auto garage, like, there's no way he's gonna get to a facade that is gonna make sense, but perhaps he wants to add a few more bays on. And that's the guy I'm thinking about or wanting to protect, and and maybe, I think there's only one or two of them, so.
I don't think that's a good idea, yeah.
But we did add extra buildings and we have language that says materials consistent with, um, or compatible with the materials that we have, brickstone, whatever, um, we've allowed for, um, cement board cladding, which is more portable and more durable, additionally, when the, um, village design review committee reviews these, um, and ultimately the planning commission can waive some of the requirements of the form-based code, so there's ways, they can waive up to three, I believe, requirements of the form-based code. So there's ways for a building to get there while still accommodating their current use or some of those elements.
There's also language that the planning commission can determine that certain aspects of the form-based code are not practical, given the existing design of the building. Um, that was not intended to allow a wholesale, you know, throwing out of the architectural requirements, but does allow for some practical considerations.
Well, what's practical about, like Cascade Automotive is a metal building, Chris, so what would be practical to add two bays on to that? Would it be a very nice brick, you know, facade, or would it be just extending the metal building?
Well, it's language that allows for interpretation and discussion versus just a blanket twenty percent.
If it is, I'm comfortable with it.
I I think the purpose of that language is purposely vague enough, but also like, this is, this is how you get that safeguard in place.
It's, it makes you have a discussion, yeah.
Is that, is that the case, Chris?
Well, I I can read you the language as written if you like.
Uh, no, I'm asking for your interpretation, right, I just gave you the scenario, what would happen?
I- in that scenario, I I think it would be, and I'll, I'll, I'll be, I'll be honest, I think it would be unlikely the planning commission would consider the building material impractical and would require the addition to have a building material that complies, most likely, I can't be necessarily, but I think that's likely how it'd be interpreted. Um, however, other aspects such as, say, the percentage of windows required on the first, uh, on the front might be considered impractical when you're talking about auto repair and they need to have overhead doors instead. Um, requiring those to be all glass or something like that, or all transparent may be considered impractical and thus waived. So I, it would be up to the planning commission to make those decisions about, um, what and where. Uh, but I do understand the discomfort at leaving that up to a future body on a case-by-case basis.
But I think the point to this allows for more of the, I don't need to say this word, the less expensive, I guess, design elements like the exterior facade and that to, okay, you're gonna add twenty percent on, you do need to make it at least look like it needs to fit in, but we understand that you also can't meet all of these other requirements. So therefore, those other requirements that would be way too cost ineffective for them will be waived. And I think, I think that's the whole spirit of a form-based code in general, is we're really not trying to to hurt the businesses that are there, but if you're gonna put in a, you know, a half a million dollar upgrade to do something, instead of having you pick out material that does not fit in, it doesn't allow you to do that, it requires you to pick those materials that do fit in. And like Andrea said, we did add some less expensive options to help fulfill that.
So that's well said.
All right, we've talked about buildings, what about some of the other requirements? Most of those buildings there depend upon parking in front to the building. Some of the, does not, that area also require no parking in front of the building? And may I also add, there's a big difference when somebody comes before either the planning committee or this board, there's a big, big difference between may and will. We may give them some exemptions, that doesn't guarantee that the poor property owner down there is gonna get it. Nor, with all due respect to the DDA funding, does it guarantee that the DDA funding is going to pick up fifty percent of the cost of a renovation of the front of the building.
Correct.
So there's a lot of things here that if I were a property owner, I'd be uncomfortable with between may and will.
But wait, John, the, so nobody right now has to change, like, this is what we want or where we wanna push redevelopment, but, and you're right that now the parking for most, the majority is in front, and none of that has to change, and but if they were to sell and the property's gonna be redeveloped, then that's the time where.
What if owner stays the same?
If they, or if they stay the same, so right now they're a hair salon and they wanna become a.
But if, back to the.
They switch the, if they switch and become a different business, I don't know, they wanna change the footprint of the building.
Back to the original example that somebody brought up was JT's. Say Joe sells to his, uh, to his brother, or his brother takes over the operations and decides to add on. Does his brother then, is it a redoes, redesign as a re-establishment? Does his brother have to keep up with the code?
From property owner to property owner, they, they run with the land, so it doesn't matter if it's his brother or some someone else or him. Land use laws are only related to the land.
You're asking if he added on, John?
Yeah.
If he added on, he'd have to follow the form-based code.
With, with the language, with some of the language with wiggle room that we just went over.
Wiggle room, last wiggle room I saw was a night crawler on a hook.
Yeah, but the flip side is just saying no or yes, you don't want that either, like, it's, it's, I think the way that they have it worded is, is the best way to do it.
Can we segment Old Twenty-Eighth Street off and put the twenty percent language just for that, is there, is there a way we can get there?
Old Twenty-Eighth Street has its own district, so that would be from a language document perspective quite easy. We just say in the Old Twenty-Eighth Street District, there's a different threshold.
I, I'm okay with that, I I wouldn't do it, but I'm not gonna.
I know you don't love it, but.
In the spirit of whatever it's called.
Pro- property ownership, compromise.
That's what I was thinking.
Property ownership.
Well, maybe that worm can get off the hook, huh?
Yeah.
This has been a non, like, just to be clear, auto uses in, on Old Twenty-Eighth Street have been non-conforming since the adoption of this ordinance.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but I don't think that the issue is the auto shop, it could be any building. I think that the issue at hand is the expansion of a building that's twenty percent.
But a non-conforming use could still expand if it wanted, could it not?
Yes, that's actually called out specifically, that a building containing a non-conforming use, uh, shall be allowed to expand now. The current language, the rest of that sentence says, in compliance with the form-based code.
I think if it's over twenty percent, then it needs to be in compliance, what do you, what do you think, John?
I look at some of those buildings in my mind, you got the old cleaners, which is now a, uh.
It's a dojo.
Dojo, you've got, uh, O'Neill's Transmission, you got JT's across the other side of the street.
O'Neill's is landlocked, I'm looking at it right now, he couldn't. Dojo.
First Walk with a shared driveway.
I'd be okay with twenty percent, I don't like it, but I'll give in.
I'm okay with the twenty, like you said, I'm, I agree with you, I don't love it, I would prefer them to have to make their building look more like the spirit of this form-based code, but if this is a sticky one.
But over time, I love the idea of the whole thing being redeveloped, I wanna be on record with that, but I just, my, I wanna protect the business owners that are there.
We have to protect the business owners that have been there for years, that's.
I, we have, but I'm still, I I don't think, but I think we very much did that. I think it was more fear-based questions and inaccurate information, but again, if you guys want that twenty percent in there, I'm not gonna fight you. I, I don't want any more than twenty percent.
I can live with twenty.
You guys have to word it, I don't.
They've got the word.
I, I do wanna just here, have it clearly, this applies to the Old Twenty-Eighth Street District only? Not, not all four village categories, okay? Um, and then my second question is that the exemption applies to the architectural requirements only because there are other things that kick in, such as landscaping, requirement to build a sidewalk, if there isn't one there, uh, and a few other.
I don't want any requirements other than what currently exist, that's my opinion.
But you still have to meet like a landscaping and architecture, or sorry, sidewalk, that would make sense.
I think that would happen anyway, would it not, under current, under current, under the current ordinance, what would be required?
Well, so, I believe it's.
Right now, they would have to conform to all of the standards of the V1 Zone District. They wouldn't be able to expand because they have a non-conforming use and a non-conforming use.
So we're actually lessening that for them.
Which is a great selling point to this whole thing.
But I do think we wanna maintain some of these.
People that do invest.
Right, but I do think we need to maintain some of these things, like the landscape requirements, sidewalks, like these kind of pieces that are gonna.
I think that's, hey, if they're gonna expand, that's, that's an incurred cost that they're gonna have to, that's gonna have to be considered.
The current rules work out well, look at the new building that was built up this street.
But you're saying that these ones wouldn't happen.
But you're saying now that we wouldn't require that.
No, I, 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 I think that the, the current requirement for sidewalk and landscaping, I am in favor of staying. I'm not in favor of the proposed requirements in form-based code, I like the, I.
I don't think, I don't think.
I think we might be on different pages, Chris, we're good.
You're landscaping the sidewalks.
Great, uh, uh, the, the instruction is clear, thank you.
So setbacks on Old Twenty-Eighth Street, to be determined, rough direction. Cascade Road in that narrow little section, sorry, small area, gathering place and international beverage, I, I think it's important to keep it at three feet, very important.
No, I want a green belt there, ten feet is not unreasonable, homes are thirty-five feet. Old Barnes are, are ten feet.
Right now, right?
I don't think ten foot is, is an unreasonable setback from the, from a sidewalk, new construction.
You know, looking at these buildings like JT's, First Walk, the old grocery store, those buildings are a hundred feet back.
We're talking about Cascade.
Cascade.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
For Rishi's.
So I, okay, so.
Any of those buildings could be rebuilt.
So we are good on Old Twenty-Eighth Street.
I agree.
Ten feet is reasonable for new construction on Cascade Road.
The village, right?
We've already discussed the three feet on Old Twenty.
No, I'm not, I'm not there.
You don't have to be there, we had more, we had four people that agreed to.
Three feet?
Three feet.
No, 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 we're just taking a, we're looking for direction in a majority, seven people.
Why don't we, why don't we split this hair, what's the difference between three and ten? Why don't we go seven feet?
Cuz you're killing Rishi's, because it's.
We're talking, we're talking, we're talking about new buildings.
We are talking about Rishi's new building.
But I'm not zoning everything for one man, I have a whole street.
But you're just pulling random, you're just pulling things out.
Pulling random numbers, setbacks are normal. Was, was Rishi, uh, was his expansion already planned or was it approved?
He put, submitted it to Andrea, this, I need your help on this, I believe it was conditioned, yes, and he went through the design review committee. design review committee, the planning commission, the form-based code, all this stuff. And they did many compromises and the facade of his building made all these compromises, but the square footage he needed by getting up to the four.
You never should have had him go through the whole process until the zoning was put in place. He was doing things that weren't, a zoning code was not put in place.
It's contingent on the adoption.
But
Timmy, I just verified, his approval was contingent upon the adoption of this zoning or going to the ZBA.
Yep.
Because it didn't say that in the minutes, so I was
Yeah.
It's in the motion.
So can he go to the ZBA then? So it's getting approved and okey-dokey or something?
But Timmy's on the ZBA, John.
How you doing?
Oh geez, literally, that's our liaison to the ZBA.
Okay, well.
I can, for whatever it's worth, they, nothing in writing, but conversations months ago with another business on Cascade Road is excited about the zero lot line and expanding their business, and it's a big one.
Mm-hmm, and it would be good.
Did they sell Alpha Food, Jay? They do.
And there's a
They have a thirty foot today. I think that just doesn't look like it's that good.
Yeah, it's
Yeah.
Then let's do four, because I honestly, I can't think of one closer than Rishi's. I, I like three personally, I
Andy, what are you?
I think I walked it off, what am I, twenty feet?
I think you're
You gotta measure the
But don't you, is this, is this from where the, where do you start measuring?
From the building to the sidewalk, yeah.
No, to the property line, to the property line.
Okay.
And how do we figure out that? Surveying.
Although, results may vary.
It's not usually, often. Can you think of, with the thirty-five feet limit?
That always
And the side setbacks, so you have to have actual distance between buildings and the, all the different things? And the traffics, the, the, the type of atmosphere, I, I think it should say three. And the initial design that came in was at a much different, I mean, it was much more traditional drive.
If you're three, I'm at ten. I'll compromise at six.
Yeah, but this is like somebody, this is people's livelihoods that have put a lot of thought into it, and I'm not just gonna roll over on some, split the baby.
I think it's a green belt. I wanted sixteen, so I think that's compromising.
Funny, cause you sat through twenty
I did, and I pushed for sixteen and you guys settled at three, and I was willing to come down to eight and meet in the middle, and you guys said three.
There wasn't one meeting where you were screaming and kicking in opposition.
I did scream and kick, cause I knew we'd come to the public, the public meeting format in front of everybody and we'd see if we could get a bigger number.
By it during the subcommittee meetings and then wait till pounds
No, I brought it up twice. I said I, I want it to be sixteen and you guys were at zero and you moved to three. I didn't see that as a meeting in the middle. I wasn't gonna get anywhere. I was outnumbered.
Like that at all.
I don't usually make a big, you know, scene and stand up and kick and scream.
At that, that we were at zero and sixteen and three.
I'm good with the three. I'm good with the three.
Same.
I'm not gonna support it at three. I'm just, that's fine. You can move forward without my vote, you go right ahead, but that's where I'm at. And incidentally, I don't see anywhere in here and this approval that says that it's contingent. If you read the minutes of that meeting, it doesn't say it.
Site plan, I can give you a minute.
Well, I'm not looking at the site plan, I'm looking at the motion made
Something else that you
On the, on the planning commission of July seven. There's five conditions, plus three, so I don't see anything that makes reference of that. So I think it's irrelevant, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay.
I don't think re, I don't think, I don't think Rishi matters in this situation because you guys already gave him the permission.
I don't think you're right on that.
I don't, well, if you read the motion, or you read the, the, the motion in the minutes, it doesn't say anywhere in there. But I'll let you review it.
Such a wrench to throw at this point to say that, that it doesn't matter, that based on your reading of that's, I'm not comfortable with doing that at all. Making that assumption.
Okay.
I think that's really reckless.
Maybe I'm missing something there in the seven lines.
No, do you wanna talk about Star?
No, no, timeout. We just need to, even
Can we come back to the Cascade Road thing?
Yeah, if there's
I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not saying another night.
I know, I'm gonna start, yes, yes, I, I'm sure we need to, the, the direction to staff or how to there needs to be changes to the draft or however.
I'm just, can we pick some easy stuff that we are I know Star was, no, I'd like to hear going.
Okay. Unless John, yeah, that's fine.
Throw a number.
Thirty.
For what, Star?
Yeah.
Is up, I'll defer to you.
Yeah. I'm open. Star is, anybody that's driven back through there knows it's wonderful.
I'd go for that.
At least the developers all left before we came to a high-density number.
I don't know.
Because residents have more stain color.
That's true. Does everybody know where Star is? Just curious, wanna make sure. Okay, you know where McDonald's is?
That corner.
Back over there.
Red Roof Inn.
Yeah.
The old Cascade Road Drive Building.
We, we need a place in the township where we can have high density. That seems like as good a place as any to put it.
One of the, one of the compelling factors that we look at when we talk about high density is additional traffic on roadways. We all know what it's like down here in the village. And I think that the general consensus of the board when we were working on this was that higher density was allowed and encouraged up near Twenty-Eighth Street Patterson, the interchange of freeway. It would be who the current residents to keep it up there.
Yeah.
And I think I'd also go with the same height as the Drury though, too. If you wanna do your thirty units per acre, you can do it, what is that, seven stories high?
Yeah, you know, we gotta sign for that.
I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that.
New sign.
I don't think I wanna go that high.
I don't think
I don't wanna have to force ourselves to get a ladder truck.
Yeah, I'm like, wait a minute, we, I think we wanna stay
Yeah, I think we'll go higher. I think you're right. Let's get an interpretation from the fire about how high we can go.
Heard from them before.
What's the number they're looking for? What's the maximum floors?
Here because of that area, they have, that was the meeting that we had where J Kent got them.
Mutual.
Fire station, he said they don't care about that because
But that's a pretty big jump. I don't wanna go as high automatically by right as high as the Drury, all that whole section.
Yeah.
I don't know, me, I don't know.
There's all your units. We're giving them to you.
Did you really? I, I kinda wasn't
Thirty.
Really, thirty units per acre.
Yeah.
But is that with bonuses?
No, no.
No, I do think we need to add some bonus into that to bolt green space and some other things to make it nice. We don't want it to
Where are you gonna put all the bonuses if you got thirty per acre?
If you go really high.
Oh, so we're back to seven stories.
No.
They want green space now, but they didn't want it over in the other area.
What, where didn't I want green space?
Yeah, take, okay.
Ten feet. Gosh, we're getting way off track. We're gonna stick with the castle.
Really good with this.
Stick with the castle.
The castle. All right, I, I personally would prefer not to automatically go immediately as high as the Drury, but
No, I agree. I don't think
But
Then let's, let's, let's
Do we even need to mess with the proposed height?
Five's five.
It's currently sixty feet, which will get you about five stories.
That's good, right?
There's five stories. And at one time in this subcommittee, did we not discuss that a certain distance from the street, the buildings would be lower? But then further back, they'd be taller. That was on, that was on Cascade Road. Okay. That was the Thoropla Center. I thought in the subcommittee, we talked at, about that on Twenty-Eighth Street, cause we measured the, uh, old advanced auto, the Carquest Building. There was something to do with how far out you were from the road as to, I thought how high you could go, or
It was because we were, because we wanted to maintain
Commercial by the road. That's what it was. That's what it was. Okay.
Related to this though.
Right, it, well, it's kind of related, cause it's that same area.
Yeah.
So if you're on Twenty-Eighth Street, we didn't want it to be then just apartments. We wanted to still maintain the commercial look on the road, so it would be commercial, you could do above
Right.
Residential, but within so many feet of Twenty-Eighth Street, you had to have commercial on the first story.
Couldn't we step building height the same way and a distance out from that? So you don't have a, a building as tall as the Drury where, uh, McDonald's sits?
Further back in.
But further back in, closer to the highway.
We also make a statement to staff that, hey, if a developer comes with a crazy idea and it's in Star, we're gonna listen.
Well, I think they already know that.
Okay, you know that?
If anything comes anywhere in the township with some sort of crazy idea
Specifically Star.
Specifically Star.
Or Glenwood.
Not anywhere.
What them? No, I didn't.
We, we'll listen.
Do we write that in the document?
Bring it to us, no.
Not anywhere, Star.
Okay.
Do you wanna ta, this is not the right time to talk about this, but there is a, like, if I came as a developer and said, hey, I'm looking at this. There's a committee that it would be, it's not even official committee, but people like the fire chief, the police chief. Like, you know, like people that will come and look at it and say, is this plausible or not? If it's not plausible based on, you know, fire says, we can't do this here, then it's not gonna come to us.
I'm, well, I'm going the next step, because like, right now, they will give opinions and say, hey, based on the current climate, I don't like I think there have been times when somebody wanted to do very high density in an area that nobody in this board would have an appetite for, and I think they have rightfully said we don't think there's appetite for that.
Recently.
Absolutely. What I'm saying is if you hear about something in Star and it's a castle, there's appetite.
We hear you.
And I think through this development review process, that will be flushed out.
You say in San Wyoming?
Or wherever it's at over there.
That was? Oh, you're talking about the castle, Grand West?
Yeah.
Star, one there.
Star, oh, no thanks.
All right.
Okay, that's
Get back to the density then.
Yeah.
And where's
We have it written as eight and we're gonna go to thirty.
Yep.
Wow.
Nope, the base is eight, the maximum is fifteen.
Fifteen.
Let's try it at fifteen, so
All right.
Max.
Max of thirty.
I agree, so there's
Wait, wait, does the base mean the minimum?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. You can always build less.
You can always build less.
But with not hitting incentive, so they don't have to do green space.
Oh, and maximum density.
But we wanted to keep something to try to promote some sort of the bonus.
That way, no developer can come into this room and say, we're not open to high density in this township. We are a very specific place. So just to confirm, twenty and thirty, yep, is what I'm hearing.
They can buy them from twenty up to thirty with the bonus program.
Twenty by right, thirty by bonus.
Wait, actually, we should ask that, cause it was
Oh, that's what
Okay.
Star.
Are we going?
We have more on Star.
No.
So do we have other, are you, we're looking for other, um?
Isn't there something about goats?
Well, if you live in, uh, yeah, we, the goat, the, the bees, goats and chickens thing is all screwed.
Oh, you wanna, Scott, do you wanna, so you had mentioned the Michigan State, you had heard from a resident who brought up the Michigan State Registry?
Well, yeah, I, I guess my hesitation is I don't want our township staff to be in a position where they're creating a registry on who has bees in the township. And I understand a desire for, uh, there to be a way to keep track of that. And there is a registry, uh, but it's a volunteer thing online. But maybe we just ask people to come in and say, hey, I wanna get bees, that they have to register using that, uh, service that's linked with the Michigan State University Extension Office. I just don't, I don't think we want the responsibility of managing that. I don't think there's a, a need for us to manage it. We've never had a call or complaint related to bees, so staff
Got them in residence.
But we have them now.
But we, they aren't allowed.
People might have them, but
They're not, they're not, the ordinance doesn't address them.
No, no, but that means there's bees. Yeah, but
It is, but the point
But it's incorrect to say
We have a concern with putting a very specific registry in
Yeah.
Which is law, because if they change the registry, or if it were to be deleted and they don't do it anymore, or they started charging people to actually register. We then have to go back and amend our ordinance, which takes, it's a longer process. I would much prefer to have the ordinance refer to a bee registry policy, which can then be adopted by the board. That can be then easily changed if that registry changes.
Yeah, and then
Well, then let's talk about the item where we did have those complaints.
Hold on, the, the bee thing.
Finish this, we're not done with this.
Thing, the registry Saying you have, saying you have to go to Michigan State to a non, that's, that's us making a requirement that you have to do something. So technically, then you have to be able to enforce it, but we can't, we, we can't require them to do a volunteer, like we have zero control over what Michigan State chooses or doesn't control. I get what you're saying, but But I had a, I had a couple emails, one resident in particular who was the thing about bees, if you're very allergic to them, and she was very much opposed to even us allowing bees. Cause as of now, some people may have them, but it's not, they are, they're under the radar, it's not permitted. And she was like, and so I think having the registry, and again, it's just for bees, and you're saying, look, if you're gonna have bees, you gotta, you gotta get on the list. Then it does give those people with allergies, um, a way to, to see who.
I would agree with that in the R one and R two district, but in the Farm or Arc District, I don't think you should require it.
Oh, yeah, does that's not, if it's, that's, yeah, that's, I agree.
That's what, that's how it was.
Well, the way, no, the way it's written, it says you have to be using them, uh, to produce an income. It doesn't say that if you're trying to pollinate crops or do it as a hobby on a large parcel.
So that would be considered and covered through the Right to Farm Act, and we have restrictions on what we can zone anyway. So when you're talking about those kind of things, there's a threshold that goes to MDR.
So if I'm not farming at all, and I live in an arc parcel of five acres, you're saying I can have the bees, I don't have to get a permit?
I don't, yeah, I
Cause I don't, I don't read it that way, but if that's the case, great. So then on the issue of where we were getting complaints and things, we wrote in there that you can have goats and chickens in R one and R two. So somebody over in Manchester Hills can have goats or Hidden Hills on a one-acre parcel, they can have a goat. But I don't see where it says if you live on FP or ARC, you know, out towards like Butrick or Snow, on a ten-acre parcel, that you can have a goat or chickens. If you look at the graph or the, the chart, it doesn't, it, I don't think it says that. I think it's a misprint.
There's a, there, there is something that we can probably clean up about the chart, because it says
It says R one, R two.
Well, but goats and sheep are listed twice. There's a section that lists just goats and sheep, then talks about R one and R two, and there's another section that says pigs, goats, sheep, elk, deer, mini horse, alpaca, et cetera, et cetera, is a longer list. Then it says FPRC, and you get double the number. But I agree with you that the chart is a little confusing and we could probably clean that up.
Preservation in Agate is different, the chart doesn't cover that, but he gets what you're saying, the extra clear.
I was gonna say, this is where it goes to the so many units per acre.
Sure. Do we really wanna have goats in the R one and R two? I mean, Caravel Village? I, although I don't know if there's an acre lot in Caravel Village, but there certainly are acre lots in Manchester Hills and Hidden Hills.
A lot of associations and for Yes, like, they're not gonna allow them. They're already not allowed.
Oh, they're
But there are neighbor, there are neighborhoods, older neighborhoods that don't have, like, I'm thinking of like Foreign Crest and Jeanland, right? That's an old neighborhood. They don't have a homeowners association.
Although you're right about the
And, and, so, you know, is that, is that the right spot for somebody to have a goat and chickens?
Okay with it. If I could, I would have a goat.
Yeah.
But I don't feel like having water.
There's a huge bush, especially for
I'm not hearing it, but
I, I would have a goat.
Well, I'm just gonna, um, talk to some of the Grand Rapids Township.
You can't, you can't, you can't have cows.
Right now is Grand Rapids Township with their residential barriers.
I, I'd totally take a goat.
The chicken thing I get. I, the goat thing's
But you just said chickens and goats.
I did, I did. I think that's a lot.
Well, but it, there's, again, there's restricted parameters. I don't know, Scott, you don't like goats, I get it.
I like chickens. I think chickens are great. Bees I'm a little concerned about unless you got like a half acre or more.
Isn't it the honeybees are not aggressive?
No, they're not. They are, they, they're, they can be aggressive.
It bump into you when they're flying away. They don't fly that high.
It can be aggressive.
So
I could think of something.
Flight paths are handled in there. Flight paths are handled in there. That was one of the conversations that we had with the person that, I don't, the BS or whatever their official term is, but I don't, the B expert, whatever their official term is, but that's why we have language in there that talks about flight paths. And make sure that when you have, you have to have landscaping that. Creates a flight path for your bees that doesn't mess with your neighbors.
I mean, we aren't, we are not East Grand Rapids, we're not, we're still a township. You wanna roll, do you wanna just give it a try with goats? I I haven't heard any anti other than Timmy, which is seems to be par for the course.
I I just, I would love to drive through Manchester Hills and see goats in people's front yards, I think that would be. Or Cascade Lakes.
Yeah, Manchester Hills, I'm sure they're.
Maybe. I'm guessing whether a neighborhood bylaws were written, they probably didn't have a, that nobody had thought that that was even something that would be a concern later.
All boilerplate legal documents usually have a catch up limit, limit. I'm pro goat.
You sell me a goat. There are, I think that there are safeguards in place that if somebody has chickens in their backyard. And they become a nuisance to the neighbors, I think that there are complaint uh avenues that can be pursued. I know that also the noise is chicken is the male chicken. You know, so there's many places that don't allow roosters in a residential area.
We don't, I think, right?
Roosters are banned in R one and R two.
Yeah, we did do that.
And there, there are other. Complaints and pros and cons about goats. Some goats, like the miniature goats are very vocal, other goats are not. I've done my research on goats too, Grace.
You like them too, John?
I do. I think that they make a great house pet.
Some people eat them.
They're tasty.
Milk?
They're, they are delicacy to the Hispanic community. Um bees, um. I haven't had anybody complain, although I I do see the one letter from a lady that has allergy uh concerns. Uh and bees normally, correct me, Andy, if I'm wrong, the bees are normally docile, the the American honeybees. Unless they become crossed with some of the other bees that are not docile. Once again, there are avenues for neighbors to complain about them. If they create a disturbance or a nuisance. I have no problems with husbandry in the R one, R two area. Or R one zoned areas, as long as they don't create a nuisance.
Here, here.
You got your four, let's go to the next.
Okay, stays as is, don't touch it. I think, right?
We'll, we'll make sure the chart is clear.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um. Additional board comments, concerns, questions?
So I I spoke with somebody in the building department about the accessory building with the second level. Reducing the footprint of the building, which I think is. Rid- ridiculous, but.
Not if, not if you get the higher height.
It's a low height law.
A twelve foot building, if you got a loft.
Only ridiculous if your height is within a certain amount.
Well, yeah, but if you build a twenty eight foot tall or twenty foot tall accessory building and you wanna put a second floor in it. The way this was written, you have to make the the footprint of the building uh smaller. So if you get a thousand square foot building, okay, and you put a second floor in it, now you you've gotta make, you've gotta make the footprint smaller. And I I don't think that to, you know, the the second floor takes away from the footprint of the building. I don't think that makes sense, I mentioned it to the, I mentioned it to somebody in our building department, and they, they did not seem to like that issue. I mentioned it to Andrea, I don't know if she had a chance to follow up with them for clarification or not, but.
Same sense from him.
Yeah, I think it was Jeremy.
So let's, just for context, because.
Well, and there's a difference between a second story, where you're using words interchangeably that are not interchangeably in this sense. There's a difference between a second story, which is like a standing up usable second story. And a small loft space that you cannot fully stand up in, that you're just putting items up there to store.
Correct.
There's a complete difference between those two, so with the twelve feet. You can make your square footage, and then if you have rafters up there that you choose to put boards on and throw things up there to storage. That's not included in your square footage.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't call that floor area.
No, it's not floor.
How do we determine what is a?
But if it's a twenty foot building, I can stand up, I can put it, I can have two ten foot.
Stand up, I feel like then the second.
So if that's that, because I think that's the key, Andrew, is there's a difference between storage area.
That's correct.
I'm trying to understand what the idea is behind making the building physically smaller. To avoid a second, a second level, if you will, as opposed to the height of the building. Generally, if you're trying to prevent a second level, you make the building.
The goal isn't to prevent a second level, the goal, this is like working backwards, I think, so you gotta start with people wanting pole barns.
Headroom is less than.
And then coming and asking for larger than what we allow, so then we agreed to go larger for pole barns, right? Then I think there was discussion, you wanted even larger than that, we didn't go there, so to say, that's like taking a piece and working backwards, the goal is. You're gonna bound, with pole barns, every guy wants a big man cave that he can add. And then what are we gonna allow and how big are we gonna?
She sheds.
Yeah, but you'd expect a she shed to be really small.
I I don't know. I know someone that want a lot of things in their she shed.
No, you'd want a super expensive kitchen and a tiny she shed. Guys want pole barns.
Okay.
Okay, but here's the thing, R one, so how big of a pole barn are we gonna let you guys have? And the whole point is if you want a big pole barn, move to Ionia, move to Lowell, but here in Cascade, so if you want a bunch of space, you gotta do the, and you're in R one. You gotta build out your garage, make it look good.
I just think that you should be going by building footprint square footage and not by floor area square footage.
But Scott, that's, it's so kind of, okay, so so look at, then you gotta look at your height.
I'm in a minority, fine.
No, it's just, I, it's the most convoluted, it's so confusing because. If you've got a standable, usable second story, then that should count for for square footage, if you don't, then it doesn't, I don't understand.
Never done it that way.
Cuz the old zoning ordinance was a mess, and everyone came to the planning commission, and then you guys had a planning commission, would would. What do you call it, trade horses and come up with some convoluted way, and we're looking for clarity and consistency and fairness, so that's, I don't give a rat's. I don't care what was done before, because if we're gonna use past precedent, we're gonna majorly take a hit.
I'm not saying we have to do past precedent, I'm just trying to understand the motive.
Because if you're gonna.
And all I'm hearing is because we don't want big buildings.
No, because there was a desire by some to go higher and only count the first story. So if you're gonna go to a point where you can have a second story, then you gotta count that, that's it, I don't know.
I think that's the key, I think what you just said is correct, but the point.
But you don't just take part of that.
We, we had a square footage amount, and that was what it was, and then all of a sudden, it was like, well, we need to raise the limit.
Also raise it.
Also raise it so I can have this whole second story too. One, we risked the A D U piece once we start adding second stories to storage buildings that.
That's an enforcement issue, I don't think that.
Anyways, and then it was a way to get around additional square footage on the top was to raise it higher.
Yeah, so you can't look at them.
Saying is, you're, you're leaving the heights the same. You have in there right now that they can go on on a big parcel, you go up to twenty eight feet high.
So what?
On one level.
Well, that's because it was increased at the last meeting, what was it?
That's the problem.
Well, it was because the ordinance had fixed it itself, it was twenty four, I think, on one page, or twenty eight in another.
The non-residential was increased. It always was that, and we changed the height from the original allowed height when we measured from the midpoint. I worked with the building department to determine what addition, how how many additional feet would calculate out to pretty much the same. As the calculation for midpoint now. I believe it's twenty eight feet now, which would be kind of, would be mostly consistent, the twenty four.
Twenty eight at peak, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so twenty eight at peak, it used to be twenty four at midpoint.
Right, so we can make a change.
Right. But what I'm saying is, you're allowing the same height building, but you're not allowing a person to put a level in the middle of it. So you're not really changing the height of, you're not making the building smaller by taking that second level up. I, I'm hearing from you, you want a smaller, you don't want the building to be too big. I I I feel like taking the, making the space in the building less usable, doesn't really uh. I don't know, I would think you would want the building to be smaller than.
I just, maybe I'm not understanding you.
These are your choices, you make a bigger square footage, not twenty eight feet, and make it a bigger square footage. Or you make it twenty eight square feet and a little smaller on a smaller footprint, and you have your upstairs.
I think it's flawed logic, and I think what you're trying to do is uh not the right way to do it, but.
I don't understand, so then let's just talk about square footage and height, and what do people want, cuz we came in with a larger one, we want even larger per your desire last time. What do you want? Like, I don't wanna go any larger than that. I I I think it's too, I I don't wanna go any larger.
I just think if somebody's built a twenty or eight foot high building, they should be allowed to put a second floor in there, and they shouldn't have to. They they shouldn't have to make the building. Footprint smaller to accommodate the second level, I I, it doesn't make sense to me that you would do that.
They're gonna wanna do higher.
Yeah, you wanna manage that. Can we look at it, and I just, I'm not able to keep up with you, I guess intellectually, I just wanna know. The requirements, do you wanna go, what do you, do you like them, do you not like them, do you wanna go bigger, I don't know.
If you got a footprint and you're allowed to go twenty eight feet high, what's the matter if there's two stories?
Exactly.
Where are we talking? In my backyard.
R two, right?
Uh, no, I think that, well, the.
Were you allowing twenty eight?
Where do you allow, even twenty feet, you could do two levels on the twenty foot.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about where are we talking, cuz the issue is R one, R two.
Well, I think this, I think to go that high, you have to be on, it goes by acreage, I think, not by the zoning, right?
What'd she say?
Twenty eight feet, three and six acres is twenty four.
Do the small sizes.
Twenty.
Two.
Two feet, what page are you on so that we?
Four dash four eight.
Thank you for coming.
Four dash four nine, oh, yeah, the height.
It's both.
So the height is twenty two feet.
If you have a fifteen hundred square foot footprint, and you're allowed twenty eight feet high. What's the difference in having a second story?
Yeah, because how do you, footprint member, there's two different ways to calculate footprint, I, because you, cuz you don't want somebody using a loophole to get a really big. In R one and R two.
It's the same size, if you do one floor or two.
Because I think what you're saying.
Right, footprint is the same.
Twenty eight feet.
Or should be.
I'm allowed twenty eight feet high and I got a fifteen hundred square foot footprint. What's the difference if I put one floor in there or two floors on the inside? You'll never know.
What is it right now in our current zoning for height?
Andrea.
She just said that the peaks are established at the same as the old midpoint, so it's in theory not a change.
In height.
That number is what?
Twenty eight.
Convert to twenty eight feet, it was measured at midpoint, which would have been twenty four, but it would equate to twenty eight feet.
On lots of less than an acre, you're only allowed to go twenty two feet.
I think that's the smart move.
Twenty two feet on less than an acre, that's fine.
Yeah, if we say.
I don't wanna go any higher than twenty two.
I don't either, I'm not asking for that, I'm just saying, I think if if somebody has a twenty two foot tall building and they wanna put a second floor in there, a second level. To store some Christmas lights or whatever, why is that, why does that make them have to make their building footprint smaller?
To store Christmas lights, you don't need eight foot ceilings.
It wouldn't count towards your floor area.
I don't know.
Guys, are you saying you want bigger than what we've got right now?
No, no, we're trying to say the same size footprint.
Shouldn't matter if you're.
Shouldn't matter if you put a.
One or two floors inside.
Is everyone comfortable with the draft, the cur, the language in the current draft?
Say the current draft.
Tell us about how you measure it.
Yeah, you gotta talk really slow, cuz I'm starting to.
Alright. I think it should go by building footprint and not floor, that's all. I'm good.
Scott, could we, I'm just trying to compromise, because I think what they're trying, what if we said that if it was go over an acre. You would be okay with whatever they do on the inside, if it's under an acre.
I think it's a two to three. Okay. Cuz the acre, I think it's gotta be two or more.
But two or more, otherwise it's a, it's a storage situation.
Two or more, right.
How does that sit with with you guys?
I don't know who we are, but I don't, I I think that makes it very confusing for our building officials, and they're the ones that ultimately have to catch these things. A perfect example is the applicant that came in and said he was gonna build a woodshed, and he got an approval to not have a kitchen. And he ended up building a bedroom instead of, instead of a woodshop and a kitchen, you know, and. Exactly.
Wait, but this is like, this is, uh, there's a problem there, but not, it's totally unrelated to like our, what we're looking at first side.
Looking at now is to try and prevent that type of situation by not letting the second floor, I don't think that's.
But it's just that, you, you've got all sorts of requests who just want, people love their toys and they love their stuff, and they wanna have big pole barns, and the reason is cuz pole barns are cheap. They're, they're cheaper and they're affordable, it's not, we're trying to, that's separate, yes.
I'm not picking the barn larger, I'm just adding a second level on the inside, whether the, what, if you built two identical barns. And one neighbor puts a second floor in his, and one doesn't put one in his, you drive by, you're not gonna see the difference.
Under that scenario, agreed, I just wanna make sure that the height and the the.
The footprint. Identical, one or two floors, it doesn't matter.
I think as long as it's two acres or greater, that's fine.
So the, the current.
Just remember, you get seven feet in a second floor and less than that, if it's seven or less, that's what you said for storage. So that already exists.
And that kind of fits this.
So if it's over two acres, then you can do whatever the heck you want in terms of floors, I think is what you're saying, I don't.
Up to the.
And that's where the, that's where the taller buildings are allowed, so that would make sense.
You're only get seven feet with anything that's below.
In the def, in the definitions, it spells all that out in regards to attic, storage, mezzanines, those types of things, that's what I'm saying, yeah, you're, I'm, I'm just, yeah, just reaffirming. But currently, it's not allowed in two acres or larger. No, no, the second floor would be more, greater than seven foot without reducing the size of the building. You can still have what you just used as your reference to put a loft up there to house, to hose your um Christmas lights. Doesn't matter where.
So I think this is reasonable, over two acres.
I I'll go along with the two acre thing and rest.
I think we're there.
Be fine with it.
I I don't mean to prolong this conversation, cuz I think you guys came to consensus, however, all of the other rules for accessory buildings. Have a category of one to three acres. So breaking it at two is doable, but would create some weirdness, so you could shift it to three, then it would be clean with everything.
Oh, yeah, that's highly preferred, yes.
Scott, are you alright with?
Three acres or more, you can go to twenty eight feet.
Yes, I think that's what it says.
Twenty four feet at three to six acres.
Twenty four.
One to, one to three, you can still do, what it was at twenty four?
Twenty two feet.
Twenty two, and you can still have a seven foot attic. Just calling it.
Good.
So then, Scott, are you good with three acres and larger, you can do the second one?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Thank you.
So even though we're all tired of this, we're having really good, I think we were great.
For the White House, we'll put about. I wanna give away more residential units in Greenwood, Green, Glenwood.
Wanna go up to?
Same thing we did in Star.
Didn't you wanna do it when all those people were here? You get credit for it. I'm joking, but joking, you're.
I wanna restrict it down in twenty eighth and Cascade Road area.
So he's.
Two, down to two.
Now, we already, I don't know, we already did a a straw vault where you, where we came up with what we want, number.
Four, and I don't want six.
So you're asking us to revisit the issue that you were outvoted on tonight?
No, we already got to two.
We got to two.
Yeah.
We didn't go to four and six.
That's all gone, they got rid of it.
Let's move on.
Come on, that was an hour ago, let's move on, ten o'clock.
Oh, they said we got four and six.
No, we're all miserable, so that shows it's probably.
Four and six is gone, Timmy, it's just two.
You see, you hear that, it's gone.
Well, I'm sorry, but with a caveat, that we're coming back with the new language and the data. There's data that needs to be provided for everyone to consider, cuz we're, the acreage for all the lot sizes with the density and how.
Me too.
Okay, okay.
Next.
Bye, guys. Dude, we are cooking with gas at this point, if you can stay awake.
Centennial.
He wants to increase.
He said Glenwood.
Glenwood. Take it right up to the same as Star.
Alright, no, no, no. Timmy's giving us Glenwood, right? Well, same as Star, take it up.
Twenty and thirty.
Did you hear that?
Hey.
Yes, twenty thirty.
Glenwood.
Glenwood.
Centennial, centennial, fourteen with the bonus.
What is it now?
Six.
Yeah.
Hey, what is centennial right now?
Fourteen with bonuses.
Fifteen.
Fif, no, centennial, fourteen.
Six and fourteen.
Yes. Yes.
I'm good with that.
You're good with twenty and thirty.
In Glenwood, in centennial, six, by right, fourteen with bonus.
Like to see.
Per acre, I think we're open.
I'd like to see the bonuses, somebody require owner occupied units to get to those. I I'd, I'd like to see the bonuses require owner occupied units to get to those numbers. I, I'd, I'd like to see the bonuses require owner occupied units to get to those numbers.
I think that's the last time.
Okay.
Yeah.
All of that language is in the, the actual one draft that you have.
The, the homeownership bonuses are more valuable than the other bonuses. I don't know that you have to use them to make, maybe you do.
We decided you couldn't.
You probably do.
They were unattainable unless.
Yeah, it was a good way.
So Glenn, he's got seven acres, about six of its years ago times. What, fourteen?
Yeah, he gets quite a bit.
That's quite a few on that little seven acre parcel.
Eighty four.
Alright. What's next? I don't know, I think.
Eighty four units.
What else is to have?
Fine, I got nothing else, I'm.
Wait, but that literally means like, pretty sure we have a draft.
But do I have my green bill?
Nope.
We haven't gotten to Cascade Road, that's.
We're gonna arm wrestle on that one, I, you, you can't.
We are waiting to get some numbers, is that what, cause originally I thought, I thought we.
On Cascade Road?
Yeah.
We haven't arrived at, we, we, we.
I don't think we talked about Cascade.
No, that's the one part where we don't have it.
Cascade Road and.
What's the next step? What are you thinking, Grace, where do we go from here?
So I think there's one issue. It's the, it's the Cascade Road setback, I believe, is there any, is any?
That's the only thing left, I believe.
But from a process perspective, like what?
No, so I'm trying to think, cause otherwise, but for that one, one issue, then we would be in theory ready to present at the changes, with the proposed changes that we directed this evening.
But in reality, we could still do that and still talk about Cascade Road and make. We just decided to change it.
We could, yeah, so I, we could, to move this forward.
We can move it for, we can keep moving forward and still keep having the discussion about Cascade Road. Knowing that when we got to the approval, it would be with an amendment if we changed what was in the zone.
What did we settle on for setback on Old Twenty Eight?
We're getting data.
Yeah, so that would be the.
Okay.
So then the.
There's Cascade and Old Twenty Eight that we have to work out.
But we have a methodology to get to Old Twenty Eight.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be a huge point of contention, because right now, and there's flexi-.
Yeah.
I think we can get there quite easily on Old Twenty Eighth Street.
So is there a methodology we can use to get there with Cascade?
No, cause Timmy's on one end of the spectrum, I just don't think so.
Well, I tried to negotiate it down, but.
Four.
No, it's two.
Five.
No, six or seven, I'm good.
I'd go with six.
He wants eight.
I could live with six.
How about five?
I can live with six.
I like three.
I like five, I, I like three too. Three from here. Cascade, so I'd be willing to go to five.
Let's do a straw hole for six.
I'd go to six, I, I don't.
I'd go to six.
I don't know if Scott said.
What about five?
No. That'd be a left handed.
Does that mean?
He's either or, that's like the first person.
If, if we have to cut a.
Oh, but I don't wanna kill, I'm not gonna be voting to.
If, 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 uh, let me, let me, let me throw something out there, okay? If you took out the property that I think everybody's concerned about, Reese. Right. And that wasn't in the picture, okay? Then would you guys be open to eight or ten feet?
No, I, I like.
But I also don't like the idea of giving someone a special.
Uh, I.
Don't think people look bad to be pulling businesses out to the front of that road if they want to, they choose to develop out to it. Like a certain health food store.
You don't, I'm, I'm sorry, you you don't want space there, you want them to be able to come all the way out to the sidewalk?
Out to the property line.
Wait, no, no.
That's what I'm saying, three feet.
Three, not zero.
I like zero, but I'm okay with three. That's the thing, is I feel like three is a compromise for some of us that wanted zero originally, so.
Right.
Scott, what's your number out of curiosity?
I'd, I would like to see eight, I wanted. You know, initially I wanted sixteen, then I said ten, I'm going down to eight.
Eight is exactly, or eleven is with the roadhouse, I'm just throwing out data.
It'd be closer than the roadhouse. Yeah. I went there today, I looked at.
And I think there's room to go.
Well, maybe, maybe Andrea, you can get us some exact numbers, cause again, we're just looking at the.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, also, can we have some visual, visual, is it possible to like vi- visualize, like photos? Trying to think of.
Well, I mean, eight is zero, isn't it?
Cause you gotta remember, if the road commission comes through and decides to add.
We got eight is zero.
You're gonna lose that green space, sidewalk and the road.
Oh.
Which is the point of moving the buildings up because you can't.
It's not just that easy for the road commission to come in and take that property.
That's a pretty.
No, but if it's their, I, their right of way, so a lot of the green space is the road right.
We're trying to zone so that we can sit in longer traffic lines because we won't allow the Kent County Road Commission to put another lane in.
I didn't say that.
Oh, that's what we're saying.
No, we're not, summarizing of what we're saying is not what we're saying.
No, there's induced demand, so if you put another lane in, more cars will come, that's how it works.
Exactly.
It carries about two thousand cars a di- an hour.
If you wanna put your road commission hat on and advocate for that, but you're not.
I have road commission hat on, I'm just saying, if we don't, if the Kent County says we need another lane and we build a building out there restricting them from doing it, we back up in traffic.
That's how I'm feeling, like, I feel like we're not getting anywhere, so can we add this to the Old Twenty Eighth Street?
Stay five minutes earlier.
Walk.
That, there's pros and cons to everything.
Some actual for Cascade Road as well, like she is Twenty Eighth Street, because we're obviously not agreeing. So that'll be another one that we have to decide.
Now, I would like to just get some reassurance that whatever Mr. Reese is tentatively been approved for, that he can go ahead with that.
Yes.
Regardless.
So I understand what the, um, sorry to cut you out, but I understand what the motion said, but the actual staff report said that the owner um, understands that the zoning was not approved, it will have to go before the ZBA or modify his plans accordingly.
So he.
But doesn't it go by the motion?
There you go.
I'm just telling you the narrative that's in here.
Andrea started Wendell and Cascade.
To just approve something. Just because.
And Wendell to.
They want to.
What's this?
Which property, which properties?
Whatever requirements.
I just think it should say in the motion that they have to follow, you know, that it's pending that, it should.
Okay, yeah, and for your clarity.
Right, it should reference that, 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 that they're going by what.
This is when I ran across.
Recommended, I don't think it says that. When we were on the, on the planning commission, if we didn't say that it recommended, what the staff says, they're going a different direction.
So, I mean, I, I like the guy, I like the guy that he wants to do a nice building, but I just don't want him to stick out there like a buck tooth all the way to the sidewalk when everybody else is set back twenty feet.
I, I just, I don't think he will.
He will, he's gonna be sitting there far from the sidewalk.
He connects to international beverage, but those aren't in, I don't think he will.
Well, I think this.
Especially the way the design of the building on purpose, so it's like, and it's more of a classic style, we've got, you don't have the entrance where, um, you know, it's on the corner of Orange and, and Cascade.
The building's gonna be eighteen to twenty feet ahead of the building's next.
That's what I'm saying.
First of all, the building next to it, there's a parking lot in between it, that's Thornout.
He's on a park, and there's a driveway.
There's no, it won't look that way, because there's so much space in between the buildings, which isn't going anywhere, cause they're keeping that parking.
Berths are on the other side.
Happy, he wants to make some nice improvement, but.
It's a really nice improvement.
Happy it is, but it can't be that.
I think we should, yeah, I don't know, I think it's important, I think the pros and cons are some things you never get around.
What else do we have to gather?
I think that's it. I just think the Cascade Road setback is a big one, especially for.
If I could just summarize real quick what we've discussed tonight. So we're gonna pull the data for Old Twenty Eight, update the language that was already presented in regards to, I believe what came out with the two units per acre, see how that applies to it. We're gonna look at also the maximum setbacks on Old Twenty Eights. Um, we're gonna look at the dentist office as the example of a minimum, chart all of that. Look at the language of expansion of buildings twenty, up to twenty percent, does that have to comply with architectural standards? Do I have that one correct?
Yes.
Star and Glenwood are going to the twenty units per acre base with a thirty, um, they can go up to thirty units with bonus. Bs, we're gonna rewrite the language about the policy, the registration policy, take out Michigan State. Goats, clear up the chart.
It's not in there right now.
It's not in there.
So we're gonna keep it as is.
Sorry.
Keep it as is.
Good, but I'm reviewing. Um, goats, uh, clearer chart. Then three acres or larger, sec- allowing second floor for accessory.
Or allow on chickens, right?
Mm-hmm. Same, you get no changes.
And then we're gonna pull data on setbacks on Cascade Road according to the, the current zoning map of what that.
Disturbers.
Before down to the, the animal hospital, I think to the river, is that what? Yep. That's what I found, that's what I took away from tonight. Okay.
Great recording, good job.
So with that, um, you had mentioned moving this forward. Is that how I understood this?
Say that again.
Moving it forward.
Well.
With an amendment, because I am not one to delay the process, but I have a hard time writing another draft where we have to supply some data that's gonna make some decisions. And I think it's.
So it would, it would be as written for those areas, we would get the data, it would be posted that way as written. And then if we decide to make changes from what it was written, we would have to do it as.
What do we have in two weeks, is it a full agenda, I mean?
Just the budget.
These two items?
Yeah, we have the budget presentation, which won't take long, well, it is Laura, but it won't take that long. Um, and then the fire department is presenting their, um, strategic plan. Which he should take, it'll probably take fifteen minutes, um. Other than that. We do a hotel update, but I would much prefer to give the hotel update later and.
Yeah.
And concentrate on this, the hotel update's going well, it feels to me like it's an allocation of those two.
Update us with, can you just send us the portions that are changed and not have to? What, what would, what would work us, without, yeah, what would you guys prefer as, as far as, um?
I just really, I, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna take any more, I guess, hits for updating a draft and then people getting confused with draft run. I think it's a valid concern, I think it was the only way to move this process forward and be organized without having any sort of confusion, but I also know that that comes with some criticism too, so I don't really wanna do that. I'm totally fine updating the sections, I, speaking for you too as well. I'm up, fine updating the sections and sending those out independently to be incorporated into it.
Tell us where they go.
Um, I'm, I'm okay doing that, it still has the, the discussion on the data.
Okay.
There's still that discussion to have, so we easily could do a work session before the next board meeting to talk about this and then go into the board meeting, if it's on there as an introduction with an amendment per what comes out of the.
You would be able to do that?
I would be.[1536.98]